Chapter 231, adequate notice. This regular meeting of the planning board has been provided. If everyone would rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Councilman Chase, Mr. Hauck, Ms. LaCourt.
Here.
Ms. MacGyver.
Here.
Mr. Mettler.
Yeah.
Ms. Niaka. Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Potasnak.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Orsini.
Here.
Okay, the first matter for consideration is the selection of a chairperson. Do we have a motion for chair?
I nominate Dr. Michael Orsini.
Second.
We have any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Your meeting, Mike.
Thank you, and thank you for reappointment as chairperson, and happy new year, and welcome to the planning board for those of you who are new. Feel free to stop and ask any questions, and don't be afraid to ask questions. We'll continue with the nomination and selection of vice-chairperson, and I'm privileged of nominating Cecile MacGyver.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? The nominations be closed?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of appointing Cecile?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, last month, we went through an RFQ process as the bylaws require and appointed an attorney. Unfortunately, we were a little precipitous in that. We needed to wait until we reorganized, so we went out again. We have several attorneys who applied. We have the one here tonight to be interviewed, Clarkin and Vignula. You have everything in front of you, all the RFPs, the responsive?
That's the only one who...
Right.
Yeah, so to clarify, back in December, when we had the RFQ and the nominations, we were basically voting with a board that, you know, was not the board that we have here tonight with new members and such. And so, that was a little bit invalid to do that, and so we went out and did another RFQ. A number of firms came forward, and only one chose to be interviewed, and that is the firm we have here tonight. So...
So that was their choice?
Yes.
You know, the firms could have come, or they didn't?
They didn't. So, we have here tonight from Clarkin Vignula, Pete Vignula. We'll interview him, and we'll take a vote, and then we'll move on with the rest of the meeting. So, Peter, if you could come up, and I think as a start, if you would just give us the benefit of you and your firm's experience in planning board and municipal land use law here in the state of New Jersey.
Certainly. Again, everyone, my name's Peter Vignolo. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Clarkin and Vignolo. I've been licensed to practice since 1997. I began practice in 1998, a private practice in North Brunswick. I have been primarily engaged in the practice of land use during my career. My partner, James Clarkin, who also may at times provide assistance to the board, has been licensed to practice since 1976, and he has also been engaged in primarily a land use practice. We have represented numerous boards throughout the state currently. I am the zoning board attorney for the city of Plainfield. I have also in the past served as the planning board attorney for the city of Plainfield. And over the course of my career, I've provided assistance to the zoning board in South Plainfield, the planning and zoning boards in Carteret, the planning board at Helmet, and the planning board in Hampton. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have regarding my experience.
So, I'd like to open it up to the board now for any questions for Peter. Bob?
I just want to highlight, because I think it's going to be something we'll need to be concerned and watching for, just highlight your affordable housing experience.
Okay. For the last three years ending in December, I was the borough attorney for the borough of Milltown. The borough of Milltown is currently engaged in a developer's remedy lawsuit over the last really developable piece of property within the borough. And in connection with that, obviously, I have had to provide them with assistance in the area of affordable housing during the course of that litigation. I also served for 10 years as the assistant township attorney, or the assistant to the township attorney in the city, excuse me, in the township of Piscataway, and assisted them with their affordable housing application.
Hey, thank you.
Any other questions for the board?
Just one, Mr. Chairman. Our former attorney chose not to reapply, is that correct?
That is true.
He chose not to reapply.
Okay. I wondered how your fees are compared with our past attorney.
They're the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, if not, then I will make a motion to appoint as our planning board attorney the firm of Clarkin and Vignula.
Second motion.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Hauck.
Yes.
Mr. LaCourt.
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Potasnak.
Yes.
Chairman Orsini.
Yes.
You don't get to focus.
Welcome.
Come on.
Likewise, Peter. Okay, so moving on, we have the minutes from the regular meeting.
Wait, 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 one thing, once he gets up here, he's got to swear, give us the little witness thing, so Mark and I don't have to be sworn in every meeting.
Okay, oh, right, you have to get sworn in.
Both.
Uh, yes. Video.
Okay.
So you can swear Mark and I in now.
So if you guys could just stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're going to provide during the course of this hearing and any other hearing during the calendar year 2015 will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Good.
Okay, thanks for reminding me of that, Vince. So onward to the minutes of December 17th, 2014. I'll entertain a motion for those absent any changes or corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
Mr. Hauck.
Yes.
Mr. LaCourt.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Chairman Orsini.
Yes. Okay, we have a couple of reso... Well, we have... Well, we don't have resolutions, do we? Okay. Discussion. We do have to pay our prior attorney, Marty Murphy, his retainer for January, which was $833. I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll move to approve that.
Second.
Let's just poll that, I think. Vince, go ahead and just poll it. I think that's what we've been doing now.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Hauck.
Yes.
Mr. LaCourt.
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Potasnak.
Yes.
Chairman Orsini.
Yes. Discussion, open space category.
Yeah, there needs to be someone from the planning board who's already not on open space to volunteer to be on the open space committee, because there's a statutory requirement that someone from the planning board be on open space, so... Mr. Mettler's been there for years and years and years, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have been representing the planning board on open space for a number of years, but I've recently been elected to the constituency of the congregation which I belong, and they meet on the same evening as open space, so I feel the need to be there.
What evening does open space meet?
The third, Thursday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'll volunteer for that.
You've got it. Everybody else took a step back.
No, no, that's just...
Okay, so we have actually a respectable docket tonight. We start off, we have four hearings. Hopefully, we can move them along smartly. Our first is Gianato, Gail and Michael, Carrie from December 17th.
Mike, we'll have to postpone that shortly, because Mr. Gianato's attorney is not yet present, so we should move along with the PvP until they arrive.
Okay, but if they arrive and we're done, they're done.
Well, yeah, well, we got three applications, I'm sure.
You underestimate me.
Pete's quick, I don't think he's quite that quick.
You underestimate me. Okay, so our first one then is PvP Franklin LLC, PLN 14-00017. And Peter, if you could, for the board, while you're introducing things, if you could just kind of, in a few sentences, briefly summarize the history. I know this is the incarnation after a number of different times, and a lot of people on the board have heard it before, but some haven't, so some historical perspective is in order?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Landfred appearing on behalf of the applicant. You're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman. This is probably the fourth time that some of you have seen this application. This is the fourth time that I've been here on this site. I will go through the history of it very quickly. Back in 2003, there was an application by Hall's Warehouse for a distribution facility. The actual applicant was Jane Enterprises, and the application was to construct 915,840 square feet of warehouse space in two buildings. After Jane received their approval, they decided, and they're a company out of South Plainfield, they decided that they were going to remain in South Plainfield. They sold the property to another company who was going to put a data center in there. They started the plans for a data center. They then sold the property before an application was even submitted to Russo Development. I came in for an application for Russo Development to take those two same buildings and convert them into data centers. The only change would be obviously the lack of parking, because there was no need for the parking for the data centers. Because of the financial situation in the late 2000s, 2008, 2009, that was never built. Russo came back to the planning board and then flipped it back to the original that Jane had, which was 900,000 square feet of warehouse space with two buildings. We are here tonight to basically take the same areas that were going to be developed by all of the previous developers and build smaller, basically office warehouse manufacturing The project actually already started. Russo actually cut a road in, there's some of the infrastructure is in place, the stormwater management is in place. All of that is going to be retained, and basically, we're going to have new development on the same areas that were going to be developed previously by the four previous applicants. With that bit of background, and I'm going to try to be very brief, I'm going to call the architect, and then the site engineer, and a traffic engineer, just to describe the changes in the project. My first witness is Mr. Feinberg.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give your address for the record.
William Feinberg, F.E.I.N.B.E.R.G., addresses 227 Laurel Road, Voorhees, New Jersey.
Mr. Feinberg, what is your occupation?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
And can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background, please?
Sure. I received my architectural degree from Drexel University. I received my license from the state of New Jersey in 1990.
Do me a favor, put the mic a little bit closer, so that the audience can...
I received my architectural degree from Drexel University. I've also, my license I received from the state of New Jersey in 1990. I've given testimony throughout the state of New Jersey at several boards in the last 26 years.
Except your qualifications.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Feinberg, you've prepared an exhibit upon which you're going to rely in presenting your testimony this evening?
That's correct.
Okay, and that exhibit consists of how many sheets?
There are four, five sheets, if we want to mark those in.
Okay, I think you've actually have the... They're already marked A1 through A5, if the chairman, and where are the handouts?
Okay, yeah, we'll just keep those designation.
Okay. Mr. Feinberg, first of all, you're familiar with and have reviewed the previously approved plans, the site plan that was done by Russo, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and you heard my opening remarks, that there were two large buildings. Can you describe the materials that were being proposed and that were going to be used by Russo Development in construction of those buildings?
The original buildings, which were two very large warehouse buildings, were to be constructed of precast panels. The warehouse portion was a precast concrete panel with tri-colored bands that are running through the precast, and the front portion, or where the office space would be located within the warehouse building, was a brick precast panel.
Okay, and what colors were being used, basically?
The brick was a iron spot, kind of gray tone brick, and the precast panels were tri-color, and they were basically earth tones that were complementary to the brick panels on the office area.
Okay. Now, the application that is before the board this evening is to construct how many buildings?
Twenty.
Okay. And can you give the board the range of the size of those buildings?
Yes, our smallest building is approximately 28,000 square feet. There's one that's 28,000. There are four, the largest buildings are 44,000 square feet, and the majority of the buildings in between range in square footage from 33,000 to 38,000 square feet.
Okay, and the exhibit that you brought along this evening is the, to show the board that basically the flavor of the buildings are the smallest building and the largest building?
That is correct.
All right, can you take the board through exhibits A1 through A5, please?
Yes. Exhibit A1 represents the overall floor plan for the smallest building, which is 28,560 square feet. There's an office area that's located at the front of the building. That represents 10% of the total square footage for that particular building, which is 2856, 2,856 square feet. The building's approximately 239 feet long and 122 feet wide. And then the next exhibit, which is exhibit A2, represents the four elevations for the 28,000 square foot building. As I previously described the building, there's an office area which is located at the front side of the building. It consists of a brick precast panel with aluminum windows that are black aluminum windows, and then the warehouse portion, again, is broken up into three panels. They are precast concrete that are complementary earth tone. As you can see, there's loading docks on the one side, and when the engineer does his presentation, you'll see how that ties into the site plan, and then around the other four sides, it's the same materials. The original buildings, I believe you had an approval for 50-foot high. These are approximately 46-foot high, and we also have a four-foot parapet to hide mechanical equipment on the building.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, something that doesn't necessarily show on the floor plan, but it seems from the elevation that the offices could be, if required, two stories high?
Well, you're limited by the percentage of office square footage that you're going to allow. What we didn't want to do is change from the original approvals on the larger buildings, which showed glass going two stories. Now, this could be a mezzanine area that's part of warehousing that brings light into the back, if they so choose, but I understand your limitations are based on the square footage of allowable office. So, in order to preserve the approvals that were previously granted by this board, we thought it was in the best interest to make the look and keep it the same.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. Which one of those is designated the frontage?
When the engineer goes through the site plan, it depends on where the parking lot is located, so the parking lot for that particular building, in some cases, are in between the short ends of the building. So the short end is really designated as the front, and there's the two entrances into the two office spaces, which are located on this exhibit A1.
Okay, I don't want to tie this up for a long, lengthy discussion, if it isn't necessary. The other approval was for two buildings.
That's correct.
This is for 20.
That's correct.
My concern is what are all 20 buildings going to be like this?
They're going to be identical. The only difference with regards to the 20 buildings are the length, the width is always the same, 122 feet. The length of the building, depending on where it is on the site plan, the engineer can go through that with you, the length of the building, in some cases, are shorter, in some cases, are longer.
Okay, I have a reservation about that. Is there any way that some of, that there could be three or four treatments that could make them a little more distinctive? I have reservations about going into a place with 20 buildings, and they're all exactly alike. Like, for instance, if it were, it's not, but if it were a housing development, we might have them staggered on the frontage a little, you know, on the front setbacks, or maybe the roof line has a little feature or something. I'm not convinced me that 20 buildings that look exactly like this are okay. Maybe this isn't an problem for anybody else.
Well, Bob, just let me try to understand where your concern lies. Is it that, since they're warehouse buildings, that you figure somebody's going to be, like, driving around the whole site looking for the building that they're looking for, or is it merely aesthetics, or what?
Well, it can be a little bit of both, but it's, we're looking at 20 pretty decent-sized buildings that are all going to be exactly alike. I guess this can be offset with what the frontage landscaping is, you know, I guess, you know, maybe there are more things to come.
And I think that testimony and those questions may be relevant as you see the site plan. Obviously, you're seeing the architecture before you're seeing the layout and the site plan, which I believe you have in front of you from the submission. I would caution you that we want to keep the building in terms of its massing, meaning the front with the office portion at the same, and then the change in materials, probably keep that consistent. If, you know, we can ask the developer tonight, one of the opportunities you may look at is we could vary in a block, meaning depending on how you look at the site plan, the brick color, you know, I wouldn't do every other building different colors.
No, I understand, maybe that's the right path.
And that may be an alternative that I think can simply be accommodated by just keeping the materials in the same locations, keeping the massing the same as we have it, but looking at maybe two or three different variations, so you have a block of a particular brick color. And I wouldn't, I would caution you not to have those changed from building to building, but maybe within a block of buildings.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think the architect just brought up a good thing for the board to think about, and perhaps you want to revisit it after the discussion of the frontage, and how the frontage is being treated in terms of screening and the visibility of the site from the road.
Yeah, I think we need more information, but let's keep that in mind.
Okay. And then, the other exhibit represents the largest of the buildings, which is our 44,400 square foot, again, holding the 10% office area. We have 4,440 square feet located, again, what represented on the elevations previously, and I'll show you in the next exhibit, are the brick area of the front portion of the building, which represents the look of an office. And exhibit A4 are the long elevations of the building, again, 46 feet in height, same parapet that we, I described earlier, same color combinations, and in this case, from our previous discussions, they're all the same colors at the same time. And then, what would be the short end of the building, or the front, where the two entrance doors are for the offices, and what would be the shorter backside of the building, depending on its orientation on the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I have no further questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Ted.
Your elevation, your elevations show future roll-up doors. How do you put an after-the-fact roll-up door in a concrete slab?
Well, the precast panel will be designed with a cutout, so when it's poured either onsite, if it's done in onsite concrete construction, or if it's done precasted at a precaster factory, there'll be a, what I'll consider to be called a saw cut in that precast panel, and then if the expansion or other docks, loading docks are required, which I believe also that you'll see on the site plan, are accommodated for future expansion, they're going to come along with a concrete saw, they're going to cut those out, and then the roll-up doors will go right into place. That's pretty standard construction for warehouse type of operation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick...
Yeah?
Okay. In A1 and A3, you show the offices separated, like on the two ends of the building, and then there, I guess there's windows on each side. Are the windows across the whole front, and then...
The windows, yes. The windows would continue, if you're looking at the exhibit A1, would go across the whole front. The office area is being dedicated to the two corners, you know, in the case of having two different occupants, you could have two different setups here for offices, and then this glass will be open to the warehouse, is what would happen.
Okay, because I was a little confused, because the doorway's centered in the overhead view, and then the bird's eye view.
It's off to the one side.
It's off to the side, and then there's all of a sudden a line in the middle. And I guess my other question is, if it was rented by the same person, is there any sort of safety concern if they were getting, going between offices? Like, what is happening in between there? Are they getting run over by forklifts, sort of? Is that for this, or for...
Well, as the project would move forward, and a tenant would come in, there's, you would have to do construction documents that have to go through your building department before any kind of fit-up work would go through. Those concerns would come up at that...
So like, the 60 feet to traverse between the two offices would have some safety considerations under that?
Yeah, they're going to have to deal with that, and limit warehouse area, and make sure it's, you know, they have the safeguards in place, but that wouldn't happen at this level at this point in time. But your building department will have that option as those plans come forward, as each tenant comes in to do a fit-up, because right now, we're not showing bathrooms, we're not showing, you know, offices that were within that space, so that would come next.
Okay, thank you.
And as a reminder, you know, once sworn in, the architect's sworn in, can answer questions later on, so don't think this is your only opportunity. But are there any other questions for this witness at the moment?
You just gave testimony...
You just gave testimony that potentially you could have multiple tenants, at least two tenants in each building, and that might be crossed for all 20 buildings. Signage, how will someone driving onto the site know what building to go to, let alone for a police or fire department, let alone for the actual tenant, for their clientele, for their employees, to know which of the 20 buildings they're supposed to go to?
That's probably a question for the engineer. Generally, buildings are numbered, you know, one through whatever or by address. There'll be a directory, and that's, you know, the plans for these, engineering may have those locations on those plans. But generally, that's how it'll be accomplished.
Thank you.
Yes, Bob.
I have a question of, is your traffic person here?
He's here.
Okay. I'll wait for that.
Okay.
I don't know traffic.
Okay. If there are no other questions at the board for this witness right now, we move on. Who've got next?
Jeff.
So Peter, just give me a sense of who you got. You got engineer?
Engineer and traffic, and hopefully that will be it.
I think, like you've done with the architect, the major things to highlight are the differences between this and what we've approved and.
That's where I'm going. And then I got staff reports that were.
Yeah.
Tell me when you're ready. Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jeffrey Spalt, S.P.A.L.T. Address is 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey.
Mr. Spalt, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And by whom are you employed?
I'm a president of Dynamic Engineering Consultants out of Lake Como, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a licensed planner. I've been practicing engineering for over 20 years and graduate of Rutgers College of Engineering. And I've testified before this board previously.
And you were accepted.
And I was.
And you're going to rely on certain exhibits in your testimony, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
All right, let's mark them all, and then I think we can let you testify. I'm going to mark as A6 what is known as the aerial exhibit. And again, I think we have handouts of all of these, is that correct?
Some of them, not all of them.
Okay. A7 is going to be overall site layout, and just for the record, the overall site layout was the old approval, not the new approval.
Right, A7 is Russo's approval from 2013.
A8 is the site plan rendering. A9 is the aerial overlay exhibit. Okay. And the handouts are where? Okay. Mr. Spalt, as directed by the chairman, can you first indicate to the board or show the board what's there now, what was approved, and then go into where we're going?
The site known as Block 516, Lot 7.01, is comprised of 70.79 acres, all located in the M1 zone. This is in the extreme northwest quadrant portion of Franklin Township. In fact, right up against the boundary with Bridgewater to our, to our north, and actually Mannville to our northwest. Property is primarily open field today, but you'll also note on this recent, fairly recent aerial, this aerial's 2013 aerial, I believe, off of Google Maps. We see a constructed stormwater detention basin, actually two of those, and the access driveway from Western Canal Road into the site has also been constructed with just base stone. It's not paved yet. In addition, they've been constructed, some of the interior stormwater management piping and collection inlets, as well as the outlet control structures and inlet structures at the stormwater management basin. All of that has been constructed, but the balance of the site remains, it's in existing, in its existing condition. Just looking at the aerial exhibit, you'll see a wooded area, a fairly densely wooded area along the frontage of the site, as well as a wooded area that enters the site in somewhat of a finger, heading from west to east. That's an existing wetlands area that's going to be preserved and protected, as well as all of the landscaping along the frontage of Western Canal Road, that existing wooded area is being preserved.
Jeff, before you go on, just for the record, because the old application was approved and construction was started, actually, performance bonds have been posted, performance guarantees are in place for all the site improvements based on the original Russo application, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And the entrance, all right, move forward to where we're going.
Yeah, let me explain the design of the site as I move on to another exhibit. So in 2013, the most recent approval granted by this board and that which was where construction was, has commenced, involved, again, orienting the board here, Western Canal Road now is shown along the left side of the drawing. And the development includes an access driveway off of Western Canal Road that extends and meanders into the site, so you don't have a clear line of sight into the property from Western Canal Road. In fact, all you'll see is the road and then the bend, and you won't even be able to see the buildings and the parking lot areas from Western Canal Road. Get into the site, and then they had, they had, got an approval for these two large buildings of 462,799 square feet each, occupying the majority of the interior of the site, as well as an area of land banked parking spaces due to additional parking needed for the use that was approved. Our proposal, and I'm going to go on to now, I'll put this below, and I'll move to the aerial overlay exhibit. Our proposal utilizes an identical access driveway into the site, and we're working within the same development footprint as was previously approved. So if you were to look at the previous approval and define the areas of disturbance of the property and the area of improvements of the property, we worked within that same geometrical shape and basically constructed smaller building units, 20 units in all, with accompanying parking spaces distributed throughout the site to accommodate each of these units. And then we tried, we, our attempt for the design efficiency was to create a situation where we could continue our standard, normal passenger vehicle parking, consider that maybe the office component parking, separate from the loading areas. And then we wanted to double-load the loading areas, whereas two buildings could share a loading driveway to the loading spaces, so we didn't have to have unnecessary impervious coverage. The resulting plan is as illustrated here, where we have a total of 20 buildings ranging insides from 25,704 square feet on our smallest building up to, I'm sorry, 28,560 on our smallest building, up to a maximum square footage of 44,400 square feet for our largest building. And these building sizes, again, vary in length, but are consistent in width. 122-foot dimension and width is consistent, but we vary the length based on really the property geometry and the layout of the site. Most of the buildings in the southern portion of the tract are consistent in dimension. On the northern portion of the property, where the property is not a regular rectangle, the buildings get a little longer as you go deeper into the site, and that's what increases the building square footage. From a parking standpoint, our target was to assume a maximum of 10% of any of these buildings were to be utilized for office, and we calculated our parking on that basis. Utilizing your ordinance, your ordinance would require a total of 571 parking spaces for the overall tract. Based on parking distribution and our anticipated need, as well as providing some degree of flexibility and being a little conservative with our parking distribution, we're proposing 699 spaces, thereby meeting your ordinance and providing adequate parking for anticipated use of the property. Additionally, for each of these buildings, we're providing three or four loading spaces depending on building size. Larger buildings have four spaces, the slightly smaller buildings have three spaces, and then we provide for additional banked loading spaces for future construction if needed by a particular user, for up to six or seven additional banked loading spaces, so that the largest buildings could have up to 10 loading spaces if deemed necessary by a particular tenant. The reason we're not constructing all of those up front would be, it would be just unnecessary expense as well as unnecessary impervious coverage. By banking those spaces and accommodating for that impervious coverage in our stormwater management design, we provide ourselves with some flexibility without unnecessarily installing asphalt and concrete.
Before you leave that topic, is this 600-plus parking spaces, do those include the loading spaces or are those just car parking?
Those are, those are car parking spaces. And the loading spaces in total is about 80.
Okay, is there any banked car parking space?
There are no banked car parking spaces in this proposal.
Would there be any reason or any way that you could reduce parking space, parking spaces?
I think we could consider banked parking spaces in certain portions of the site for sure, as long as we continue to maintain the minimum needed for any particular tenant. And then where we might be a little heavy on parking based on geometry, we could bank, we could bank a portion.
Because, I mean, the board's history is one of always to try to limit parking to, you know, that which makes the site function, but hopefully no more, and has always looked in favor of banking for future.
We would be fully agreeable to that. We don't want to pave anything unnecessarily, it's unnecessary, when it's an unnecessary expense. We would like the ability to have the opportunity to pave additional spaces if deemed necessary for a particular user. So the banked parking spaces might be a great solution in that regard.
Okay, great.
Yeah, no, and I was just going to say that the overall, from your testimony, the overall data from the site, the impervious coverage, the building envelope, all the setbacks and various things that were approved with the earlier application carries over.
It does. We have no variances.
There's no, there's no real change other than within the site, but two large buildings now going into 20 smaller.
And by fracturing the building into smaller pieces, we create interior landscape opportunities. So as a result of those interior landscape opportunities, within that same development footprint, we're actually reducing impervious coverage by 7.1 acres. So whereas it was 44.6 acres of impervious coverage approved under the previous plan, we're reduced down to 37.5. So it's a substantial, about 15% reduction in impervious coverage. However, we're using the identical stormwater management basins. So we rerouted the basins with this reduced impervious coverage, lower runoff coefficient numbers. And as a result, the stormwater management basins function only that much more effectively. We felt because we have secured, or the previous applicant has secured NJDEP approvals and DRCC approvals, Delaware Raritan Canal Commission, those approvals being in place, it would be, from a permitting standpoint, very cumbersome to just start that permit process over by redesigning the stormwater management basins. Since these basins are also partially constructed, it only made sense to take advantage of them. So the stormwater management basin designs are identical to that which was previously approved. However, we're reducing the amount of water going to them, so their performance is enhanced.
Understood. Jim?
Yeah, just one question on your, you're going to have tractor-trailer nose-to-nose, basically, in that shared driveway. You got enough room for the turning radius coming out of the docks?
Yes, we were able to verify that we have adequate room for turning radius coming in and out of the docks.
That'll be like 60 feet long when it's in the dock.
Right, right.
And when you turn out, it's like.
You need like another.
110 feet or so.
Yeah, we like to have, we like to have from dock wall to first obstruction.
Right.
A minimum 110. I think, I believe we targeted 120 here.
All right, good. Okay.
Thank you. As I mentioned before, by reducing the impervious coverage, we've, we've reduced the impervious coverage by introducing interior green space areas where previous approval had really no interior green space. Within those green space areas, we've also added plantings. So as a result of our project, the project will include 145 shade trees, 354 evergreen trees, 48 ornamental trees, and 890 shrubs planted throughout the site. What's important about this design as well is that all of the previously approved screening plantings around the perimeter of the site are literally identical to that which was previously approved by the board. So the treatment of the frontage, the entrance area, the entire north, east, south, as well as buffering to the Western Canal Road and to the canal itself, all of that buffering is identical, and then we provide supplemental additional plantings to the interior of the site. We've reduced none of the previously approved scenic corridor buffering that was important as part of the previous application. Additionally, there's supplemental buffering around what is a, there's a small Kiway parcel out along Western Canal Road, there's actually a historic graveyard, there's headstones dating back to the 1700s there. It was important to have that area buffered from the site, or let's say the site buffered from that area, and that buffering has all been included and maintained consistent with what was previously approved by this board.
Bob, just as, Bob Mettler, just as a question, who takes care of that? Cemetery?
Unfortunately, no one. It is the Davis family and the Wirtman family, of which were old families. For a long time, there was a debate about who actually owned the property, but it seems to be the state of New Jersey has inherited it, but probably without any money to take care of it, so. Any kindness that your client might want to do to the cemetery would be appreciated.
I'll cast that on to him. Mr. Mettler.
As one would imagine, with the development of this magnitude, the intention would not be to go in and build the entire thing on the first day. Our intention is to phase the development, and there is a phasing plan included within the submitted drawing set, and I think it comes up on this plan. So on the site plan rendering, we show phase lines. The first phase line runs north, I'm sorry, east to west after the first building, and then the second phase line basically runs north to south. The intention here with the phase line was to provide, phase one is basically constructing the main access driveway, stormwater management improvements, and one building. This is the equivalent of a model home in a residential development. Get the first one up, serves as a marketing piece, the next guy comes in and shows interest, we have a tenant lined up, and we start knocking off the units on the second phase. But all the stormwater management improvements and infrastructure and all the utilities are already in place. So we'll just, you'll put in the loop road and then start sectoring off the buildings. And then phase three will require construction of one small basin, which handles a lot of the roof runoff from the easterlymost buildings. And then, again, one at a time, those will get constructed. We've actually met with the township engineer, and he agrees with this approach, and that phasing can be handled in coordination with his office for those interim conditions that will occur as buildings are completed while we want to maintain and ensure proper fire safety and circulation, ensure that the roadways are in a serviceable condition as construction continues throughout, and we add buildings to the development.
Jeff, just a couple of quick questions, and then I think we could finish up. How do utilities get to this site?
Utilities get to this site through an existing easement that punches out to Randolph Road, and all the, that includes a pump station for sanitary sewer, we've got a natural gas coming through there, we've got a 12-inch water main coming through there, and that, and it all has to cross over, but we have permits for the crossing over from the brook whose name escapes me, I think it's Randolph Brook? There's a crossing here where we're going to, we're actually going to go under the brook with those utilities.
Okay. Interior lighting for the parking lots?
Interior lighting, we're using the same fixture that was previously approved. The lighting is a 25-foot-high fixture. There are both 250-watt and 400-watt metal halide fixtures based on location and need, with our intention being to eliminate spillover from the site, but while providing adequate illumination to meet your ordinance on the interior of the site. Your engineer did have some suggestions regarding the lighting design in his comment letter, and the applicant and my office would agree to fully comply with your engineer's comments to ensure satisfactory lighting design meeting the ordinances.
Okay. Now, also, we appeared recently before Franklin Township's Historic Commission with this application, correct?
Yes, Historic Preservation wrote a memo on January 23 indicating that this project will have no negative impact.
Okay. And just for the record, the old applications and this application, none of these buildings are going to be visible from the canal or from Western Canal Road.
That's correct. The only people that are going to see these buildings are the people that intentionally turn off of Western Canal Road and drive into the site for purposes of being there.
Okay.
Lastly, from a signage perspective, we do have a sign proposed at the main entrance. The sign is six square feet. It's two foot by three foot, it's four foot high. So it's about, it's smaller than this piece of paper. All it does is identify the address and the name of the location. And it's outside of the site triangle, and it's located far enough back from the Western Canal Road to be virtually invisible, but adequate enough so that if you gave somebody the address, they'd be able to actually find the driveway.
Okay. And again, for the new board members, what improvements are being made to Western Canal Road?
I'd really rather have the traffic engineer go into greater detail, but it is being widened and then center turn lane being provided for left turn movements into the site. So essentially, what you have is a road widening and then a taper from, in both directions from our driveway for safe ingress and egress, and to provide a queuing lane for that left turn move in case of oncoming. for safe ingress and egress, and to provide a queuing lane for, for that left turn move in case of oncoming traffic.
And lastly, there were numerous staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application. You've had an opportunity to review them, along with reviewing them with the client, and we can comply with all of the staff reports.
We take no exception to any of the comments included with any of your professionals' review letters.
And all of the changes that are requested are fairly minor in nature and don't significantly alter what the board is looking at tonight. Is that correct?
Very minor. No, no significant change.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you very much.
Questions from the board for this witness? To my right? My left? Oh, more to my left. Start with Carl, since I started with Ted before, and then we'll work our way this way.
The original application proposed a meter pit for the water line. Is that also going to be proposed again?
Yes, we made no changes in that regard.
Okay. Do you agree that you're going to, you can provide a detail per the township standards for the water, from the water department on the plans?
That would be our intention, yes, sir.
One other question I have is, is any part of the phase two drainage going into basin number one?
Basin number one being the smallest basin?
Yeah.
And no, there is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ted?
On your landscaping plan, you had some small islands among the buildings with tulip trees, as proposed trees. Tulip trees can get pretty big. You think that's an appropriate tree for a small island between parking lots?
I could certainly review that with my landscape architect, and we'd be amenable to a change. We're not, we're not married to the tulip tree.
Yes, they mean a tulip magnolia or something like that.
Specific species. Let me, I probably have the list here. Grab that list.
I think they, they said they're going to look it over with their landscape architect, and I think that's...
Yeah, I mean, I know what Ted's saying, and he's right. That's, that's a huge tree for putting in between a couple of buildings.
And although none of us will be here to see it maybe 40 years from now, they get full size, and then there's a hurricane, they fall over on your building.
I have every intention of being here in 40 years.
Well, I, I don't expect to, that's all.
So I will certainly take a look at that.
On the, the comments from the engineer, which we only just got, I hope you had a chance to look at them.
We did. In fact, we had a chance to speak with the engineer as well.
Yeah. Number three says, "A previous survey from the applicant indicates that this lot may not have frontage on Western Canal Road. There are two state-owned lots, eight and 10, which front Western Canal Road." And I remember those from a prior surveys. You know, they're very narrow slivers, and they'll probably be occupied by the widening of the road, but has this been cleared up?
Actually, Mr. Chase, Russo Development did get engaged with the state of New Jersey, and that issue has been resolved by the prior owner. I can provide the documentation, but that has been resolved.
How? Do you pay off the state?
Oh, no, we would never do that.
No, I mean, in the terms of buying the lot from them.
Yeah, no, we, we actually, it wasn't us, but Russo instituted litigation against the state to clear title, and it was cleared. I don't know exactly what was that. Or is he still working on? Actually, my client says it's still in progress of being cleared, but it is, it is ongoing.
Still in progress of being cleared. Well...
But the state is aware of the application. The state has reviewed it. But Russo is in litigation with, with the state on that issue.
So your project can't proceed until that's settled?
No, that's not necessarily the case, but that's going to be resolved hopefully before we start.
Well, given the rate of start of proposed development on this property so far, I guess that is a safe conclusion.
Well, I, I think I have a client who, who is looking to move this forward. He has, you know, he has purchased the property, so he's not a contract purchaser. He owns the property. He is serious about cleaning up all of the open items and, and moving forward with this property, project fairly quickly.
It is in condition that needs to be satisfied.
Right.
So there it is, and it'll be in the resolution, and so we'll worry about what happens later. Mark?
Did we get a review from DRCC and from the county?
We did get a review from the county.
It was dated January 20, 2015. You should have been copied on it.
The county accepted our traffic data, and the design is going to remain unchanged. There's a number of technical administrative issues, bonding issues, things of that nature, but nothing from a geometric modification standpoint. The plan's not going to change. We're just going to have to jump through the various hoops along the way to be able to get a final sign-off. And then DRCC is withholding until we get county approval.
Okay. Did the DRCC comment, the staff comment on the aesthetic impact?
The DRCC reviewed the original application and also reviewed this one, and they had no issue with the original. They have no issue with this one also. And I will provide, actually, the engineering department was provided with a copy of the county report. I'll send it to you tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. You probably have it on record.
We have the, we have the county report. Okay. We have it in file.
Okay, I, I just have one last quick question. Is, is the detention, are the detention basins made of anything that you can landscape them internally?
There's a portion of, of each of the basins that's a sand bottom, which is illustrated in a lighter beige color, but the balance of its lawn is going to be maintained in mowed.
Okay. That's, that's kind of where I'm going with that, is just try to get away from that, you know, which has just got to be mowed, and if it can be landscaped, especially with trees that are, you know, water-loving, then it gets, it's really much nicer both aesthetically and operationally. I understand some basins are, are constructed where you just can't do that, which is why I asked.
Yeah, you may want Carl to point out that.
For a combination detention infiltration basin, if you want to, you know, landscape the top berm as shown, it's really not conducive to put any trees within the basin.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
What about natural grasses? Because they help deter the geese.
Cattails.
The, I'll have to double-check. We have a wet, wet-tolerant grass mixture, so you don't have to mow the grass as frequently, and it doesn't, you know, get rutted and start falling apart. That's what we have in there. The suggested grass species for detention basins is actually dictated in the New Jersey Best Management Practices Manual that was issued by DEP, and we're compliant with that. I think that has all been considered in their selection of recommended seeds for, for detention basin and infiltration basin use. And I agree with, with, with Mr. Hawk that, that trees within the basin are not a good idea just because of leaf debris and maintenance considerations, among other things.
What about the, like, around the top?
Yeah, around the top, we have proposed landscaping.
Okay.
Yeah, so the perimeter is, is landscaped as, as was suggested, I believe, in the previous application and continued through with this.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. The signage, is that for the traffic engineer or the civil engineer in regards to signage on the buildings?
Signage on the buildings, none is proposed as of right now.
So identification of building two, three, four, five for police and fire?
That'll be, that'll conform to your ordinances into the building code with respect to numbers on the, on the buildings and things like that. But as far as tenant identification signs, we have none proposed yet. Our proposal would be when we come in with a particular building, would be to make a sign submission package in accordance with all of your ordinances and would not exceed your, your sign criteria. And I believe that's an over-the-counter permit application for sign, sign permits, Mr. Dumbbell?
Yes, assuming it conforms, yes.
And it would.
And, and Mr. Brown, as far as the building numbers, once this project is approved, we send it to the 911 coordinator, who then will assign each of the buildings a building number. And usually, if there's multiple tenants, it may be that it'll be building 1A and 1B and 2A. But that's the way it would work. It would come out of the, they would give us the unit numbers.
And I did make a note to make mention this and failed to during my initial testimony, but for the interior of the site, we'll also be providing interior directional signage, as well as interior traffic signage, stop signs, no left turn signs, things of that nature. But those signs will be also in conformance with your ordinance, and will just be of necessary size to, for, for a visitor or, or delivery to understand buildings A through F are to your right, buildings, you know, G through L are to your left.
Is a detail required with the application? Because I don't remember seeing directional signs in the details of the package.
The traffic control signs are in there. We, we don't have a detail worked out yet for the interior directional signs. It will be subject to final arrangement, you know, in sequence of construction.
And then you also mentioned the professional comments. Does that include fire also?
Yes, sir.
And no exceptions to have a meeting with them, because I understand there has been change in site plan and the, and the required hydrants, or the hydrants that are being requested for fire, that definitely that meeting would be...
We will comply with whatever Mr. House asks.
Our plan is to have that meeting and hash out what he's looking for and incorporate it into the drawing set.
Pete, you know, we're talking quickly about the directional signage. Do you have any idea? Because, you know, our ordinance only allows three square feet for the directional signage. So I, I think if you think you may want to have it bigger than three square feet, you may want to ask for it now. I'd hate to have you to come back just to deal with directional signage if you think it's going to be a little bit bigger. Typically, in this type of development, you would want it bigger than three square feet. So maybe you want to mention that now instead of wasting the time and the energy, six months, to come back just for signage?
Does he even know that yet?
Well, I don't know if they know, but I just...
They don't know it.
Yeah. I, I think we will leave it the way it is. If we do need to come back, we, we can always come back for the signage. We may have to come back for some tenant signs also, so we'll deal with that later.
I just, I have one question. I tried to read through all this traffic information dated in, it goes back to '14, I guess. Given the original buildings, they're too large.
Well, wait a minute. We have a traffic person coming, so why don't we...
Oh, he hasn't testified. I'm sorry. Never mind. Stop.
So if there are no more questions for this witness, let's move on to traffic. And let's sort of try to highlight any differences between this and the other plan.
That's what I've been trying to do.
If it's not any worse, then I think we're making a...
Well, it's different. It's not a question of better or worse. It's different.
No, there's always a question of better or worse as well as different.
Can we swear a minute?
If you could switch that microphone, raise your right hand. Perfect. Do you swear the testimony? Are you going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and provide your professional address.
My name is Andrew Jaffola. Last name spelled J-A-F as in Frank, O-L-L-A. Located at 1904 Main Street in Lake Como, New Jersey.
Mr. Jaffola, you're also employed by Dynamic Engineering?
Yes, Dynamic Traffic.
Traffic, okay. And can you briefly give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Sure. I'm a graduate of Rutgers University. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer.
Accepted.
Thank you. You have actually looked at the previous approval and the trip generations from the previous approval, the Russo application, as we, as we have called it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And will there be changes in the trip generations from the old approval to the new approval?
Yes, there will be an increase in trip generation from the previous approval to this one. And to give you an a brief idea of why, the previous approval was for a distribution center, which is typically highly automated, and you have less of a workforce associated with that type of project. With this type of project, we're, we're getting away from a distribution center. Obviously, it's more flex-based. So with that, there are going to be more employees that come to the site. But on the contrary, with a distribution center, you typically have a high volume of trucks coming to the site. Because it's so automated, the idea is to get product in, get product out, and you do that via truck. So when we come to this type of facility, we are going to expect more employees but less trucks. And, and really, the, the site plan showing the previous project really indicates that as compared to the current project. On the previous project, we had loading spaces for up to 300 trucks total between the two buildings. On this current project, I believe we have 79 loading spaces that could be used by trucks. So just by way of the site is designed, you can see that we're going to have a lesser number of tractor trailers.
Okay. Access to this site obviously is one point of ingress and egress on Western Canal Road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And are there site improvements that are being proposed upon Western Canal Road?
Yes, we are proposing widening along Western Canal Road to accommodate a left turn lane into the site. Currently, there is, there wouldn't be enough room to put in a left turn without the widening. The purpose of the left turn lane is if someone is entering the site, really coming from 287, they would have space to wait in the traveled lane without impacting vehicles following them so they could safely enter the site.
Okay. Now, Western Canal Road is a county road, correct?
Yes, it is.
And has this application been reviewed by Somerset County?
Yes. In fact, they asked for a very specific analysis analyzing the absolute worst-case conditions for this site. And based on that analysis, and I'm going to quote from their letter since it appears that the board hasn't had the benefit of reviewing it, "The site driveway and the intersection of Western Canal Road and Randolph Road will operate at acceptable levels of service upon full build-out as either warehouses or an industrial park." You know, so based on, you know, their review of the analysis they requested of us, with the worst-case conditions, you know, this project is going to operate with acceptable.
Okay. And for the boards of edification, this property is fairly close to the intersection of Western Canal and Randolph. Is that correct?
Yes.
And are there improvements in place that the county is going to put at that intersection?
Yes, they're proposing to install a traffic signal at that intersection, and also minor modifications to the corner radii there. At that location, once the signal is constructed, coming off of Randolph Road, there would be two separate lanes, one for a left-turning vehicle, one for a right-turning vehicle. And similar to our site driveway, there would be a dedicated left-turn lane to turn from Western Canal Road onto Randolph.
Okay. And, and part of their requirement is that we are contributing toward those intersection improvements financially. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Jim?
Just one question. When you gave us the truck count, that includes, when Dr. Chase talked about the potential for opening additional loading docks, your numbers includes that? When you said 79 trucks...
Well, currently, there's 7...
No, I'm looking at the build-out. Every building's got the potential to have 10 more loading docks, as I included in that count.
Well, the 79 includes what is proposed today. There is an additional 125 banked loading docks. So in total, there would be about 200, but still, that, that is less than what was previously proposed, which was 300 in the previous plan.
But that, that number, 200 now, that's part of what you did with the county in analyzing the trips and all the rest of that?
Yes.
You used the 200 number.
Well, we wouldn't directly use the 200 loading docks.
Whatever the appropriate number is, but...
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely.
There's a potential for 200 trucks, potentially.
Yes.
Full build-out with all the doors open.
Yes, we consider this full bout, full build-out, all the doors open with the most intense land use that could come and occupy the site.
About 200 trucks. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Bob?
How many tractor-trailer, are we talking about 18-wheelers? And where are they going to be coming mostly from? 287?
I, I would, I mean, if I had to venture, I guess I'd say 95% from 287, and the other 5% maybe get lost. But really, you know, that's, that's the idea of locating these types of projects near 287 is because that's, that's how trucks get here.
I'm just concerned about some of them, even where Western Canal Road is, is coming across some of our smaller bridges along Canal Road, because I know that there's quite a few homes on Canal Road with the causeways that fences have been knocked down and a, somebody's porch was knocked down. I just want to make sure that that's far enough away that it's not going to hurt some of the residents with the trucks, because I know some of the GPSs tell them to go over these causeways. And that's why we have some of the problems with the bridges we have now in town because of the over-tonnage trucks coming on. So I just want to make sure that most of those are coming off of 287.
They, they will be coming off of 287. And to kind of answer your comment about the GPS, you might encounter that where you have a site that's really not proximate to a major highway. In this condition, we have this site located a mile from 287. It would be very rare and very unlikely that GPS would decide to send them to another exit and to come in through the back roads. It's really so close to 287 that it really wouldn't be assigned in another direction.
I think they would really have to try to get lost based on this, this location.
That's why we have the problem over the causeway right now on Amwell Road, because of the trucks.
The other thing, too, to consider is, is, as you just said, compared to the previously approved use, this is going to have far fewer truck traffic, far less truck traffic than that.
Okay, I'll, I'll...
That's the testimony that's been provided. I think that was part of the report that they had to submit to the county. Is that correct?
Well, we didn't discuss truck traffic explicitly. We really, what we analyzed in the county was the project as the county requested us to analyze it, which is as an industrial park. When we do a traffic analysis, we don't consider trucks explicitly or vehicles explicitly, or passenger vehicles explicitly. We consider the trip generation for the site and as it impacts the, the various intersections. For this site, we did increase the percent of trucks in accordance with typical practices, but yes.
Any other questions?
What I'm saying is you have, you had two big warehouses that were pretty much automated. Now you're going to, and that's probably going to be five, six years out, where you have the full amount of storage. I just think that this has more trucks coming in and out than you would with two real big...
Well, I mean, I'll just describe a distribution center the way that my understanding of the way that it works is it's highly automated because you want to get product out as quickly as possible. And the only way you do that is to load up tractor-trailers and get the product out. On a site like this, you know, there is warehousing proposed, but it's really flex space. You might not have someone storing goods who's just shipping goods back and forth. You're going to have people doing various types of activities here. So it's really not solely dedicated to the storage of goods that need to get from point A to point B, which is typically done via truck. So and on top of that, we have a lesser amount of square footage. So even if this was all dedicated to storage, you'd have a lesser amount of square footage on this site. So just by way of reducing the square footage, you anticipate a lesser number of trucks.
This question, would you, and you're probably, because you have 20, where would be, what do you think would be the height of the activity of the trucks more in the morning than, because trying to get around town now and trying to get around where this is going to be at 5:00, between 4:30 and 6:00, is just a nightmare. And that's without any of this stuff.
I would anticipate it to be during off-peak hours. Typically, truck drivers, they like to avoid traffic just as much as everyone else. They know to not leave during the height of traffic.
Okay.
Any other questions to the traffic?
Just real quick. So before, it was 300 trucks and less cars?
Well, I didn't say specifically 300 trucks. It's 300 loading spaces that was previously there. And now we have 79 loading spaces that are currently proposed, including the banked loading spaces.
Close to 200.
About 200, yes.
And then 600 and some, 60-some vehicles, like for people, for the office area.
Which they did testify they could probably bank some of them.
Yeah, probably bank some. So just overall, what I'm hearing is there's no difference? And I'm just struggling with all these different things to...
Well, no, there is going to be magnitude of trip generation, counting both passenger vehicles and trucks. There is going to be more traffic associated with this project.
Is there a percentage associated with that, or...?
It's, using the worst-case analysis that the county asked us to do, it would be on the order of magnitude of over double. But using what we believe to be a more accurate representation of what type of traffic would come to this site. Excuse me, I misspoke. In the previous approval as a distribution center, the total trip generation in the morning peak hour was about 100 trips, 102 trips. As a warehouse, which is what we're looking to really represent the trip generation of this facility, what we believe that this would be, it would be in the order magnitude of 250 trips in the AM peak hour. Using the absolute worst-case scenario, which is what the county asked us to analyze and what is in the report that we submitted, it's 463 total trips in the AM peak hour. So as you can see, what was previously proved 100 trips, what we approximately, where the range is going to be is around 250 or so is what we believe. Worst-case scenario that the county asked us to analyze is 463 trips. And really, the county wanted us to take a look, and they're building a brand-new intersection of Randolph and Western Canal. And they don't want to spend this money and have it be outdated in the future. So they're really concerned with the traffic that's going to be generated by this project and how it impacts that brand-new intersection. So really, they went, they had us go through and really analyze the absolute worst-case condition.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for this witness? If not, you can be seated. Peter, I just wanted to ask you, in addition to the township engineer, I assume you're also complying with the staff reports of Mark Healy, the Traffic Safety Bureau.
With all reports, I think...
All of them. You read them all?
Right. And just one other comment in response to Mr. Thomas's question earlier this evening. I discussed it with my client. And yes, we can have the buildings be of different color. They will not be all identical. They will be all earth-tone, but we will vary them so that they will not all look the same.
Okay, but I don't want it looking like Xanadu either, right?
No.
You know what I mean?
I use the word earth-tone.
Earth tones, yes. Please. Nothing passed down.
Even though you won't see them, but yeah.
Even though we won't see. Google Earth will.
That concludes my presentation. Again, this is an amended site plan. This is a fully conforming application with no variances. I would respectfully, I know there are other matters on this evening. I would respectfully request the board grant the amended site plan approval. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Make a motion to open to the public?
I make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to come forward and speak on this application, and this application only, please feel free to come forward to the podium and give your name and address and be sworn in.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one coming forward, I would move that the public hearing for this application be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Since there's nothing further from Peter, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the application to be approved with all the details that the board has discussed.
Mr. Chairman, just one clarification. In terms of the banked spaces, you could do one of two things, I think. I think one thing, you could make them come back to the board if they decide to bank. Or on a building-by-building basis, perhaps you could have the, allow the developer the flexibility on a building-by-building basis to bank in consultation with the Township Technical Review Committee.
Yeah, no, I don't want them back here every time they decide to open up. I mean, we're basically approving them for the spaces that they said they would, which is 600 and some and plus the loading. They're going to bank some loading. They're going to bank some parking. If they need it, it's approved.
I just wanted to make sure that staff got that clarification under that direction.
Second on my motion?
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Ms. MacGyver?
Yes.
Mr. Mettler?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Patasnak? Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, two quick things. Mr. Onyaka arrived at 8:30, so he's now present. The other issue is, Pete, I would say it is almost impossible that we're going to get to your last application. We have two more that we really need to finish tonight. And I know the chairman of the board typically will not start that, so, and there may be people here for that. So did you want to continue the K application to the March 4th meeting, since you were already here for another application that night?
Yeah, I got a feeling we won't get to K, so I would ask that that be carried then to March 4th with...
Wait, we don't have another meeting this month?
That we've, the 15th doesn't work for...
I have a conflict for the 15th meeting.
And we already have one for March 4th, so. So we already have an application for March 4th, so that'll work.
I'd like to have that conflict.
So, Mr. Chairman, just for the members of the public, the Brian K matter, PNL 14-0016, which is a subdivision on Gerard Avenue, will not be heard this evening. There will not be any further notice. That will be heard at 7:30 PM on March 4th in this room. So if you're here for that matter, you don't have to stay because it'll be heard in March.
Do we need an extension of time on that?
Yeah. Yeah, but if we do, you'll grant it. Just for the record, if you need it, I'll grant it, but I think you're well within time.
Just wanted to ask. Thanks.
Thank you. Given that the Gionatto attorney is here, we'll go ahead and hear that now and then finish up with Summerfield. So without further ado, PLN 07-0005, maybe there's another zero in there, four zeros and a five, Gail and Michael Gionatto.
Mr. Chairman, maybe it'd be helpful for the board if I gave a brief overview before the application. Several years ago, Mr. Gionatto came for a subdivision. They are now, they are now back this evening to ask for several variances in a relief of condition. The relief of condition is for the lot that was not built upon. The board approved a very specific house at that time, and the applicant would like a relief of condition to build a different type of house, generally type. You have in front of you the TRC report that we did in November. They are also seeking a variance for the shed in the backyard that was supposed to be at 25 feet, and it's at 14 feet. There's also a lot coverage variance for the lot where Mr. Gionatto is living, and an impervious coverage variance. You should have in front of you the memo from the TRC. I put it in front of you, so in case you didn't bring it. They are no longer seeking the variances for the other lot that has not been built upon at this time. The only thing they're seeking for that is the relief of conditions to build a slightly different style of house.
Okay, so all the variances are now stemming from the...
That, right, right. The only relief that they need for the other lot that has been built upon is the relief of conditions, because as typically, the board doesn't approve, you know, put a condition of a specific house, but there was some testimony, and now that he's ready to build, he wants to be able to have some flexibility.
Oh, yeah. What about the shed?
The shed on the existing property, as they'll testify to, a rationale why they don't think they're going to be able to move it without causing some hardship to the property. But they are seeking that variance for the shed.
So that's on the existing lot?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll hear from them. So, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Ted has a question.
Oh, yeah.
What is the situation about side yards for the proposed new house? Is that something that a variance was, were already granted?
They, yes, they already have a variance for a side yard for that, and they don't want to change that. The only relief they want for the lot that has not been built upon is a relief of condition, because you require them to build exactly the same house, and they want to be able to build a slightly different house. But there's no variance that they're requesting for the lot that has not been built upon. You did.
All right. You're up.
Hi, good evening. So we'll start with the undeveloped lot. It's block...
Counselor, could you enter your appearance for the record?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Janee Ciccarelli for the applicants, Gail and Michael Gionatto.
Could you spell your last name for the record, please? Thank you.
So in terms of the lot, it's block 84.03, Lot 25.01. That lot is currently undeveloped. However, as Mr. Dominic explained, it is subject to a subdivision approval that requires a specific house be built on that lot. Mr. Gionatto is seeking the relief of that condition so that he can build a different architecturally styled house. He is planning to build something that conforms with all the previously approved variances. So if there's any questions from the board, I mean, that section's pretty straightforward.
We wouldn't happen to have a drawing of that?
We, I, we do have...
So the board knows what they're approving, or we're trying to prove?
Now, just to be, just to be clear, there, what I'm going to pass out is not specifically the house he intends to build, but something similar. So the relief of condition being sought is not to go from one specific house to another specific house, but rather the relief that we don't have, he doesn't have to build the house as architecturally and specifically indicated in that subdivision approval.
What was approved was 2,700 square feet, two-story. Is it still going to be 2,700 square feet and two-story?
If you want to, yeah, if you want to talk, you got to talk. It won't pick it up there. Thanks.
So I'm going to pass out, if you'll just turn to Exhibit A, that should, that will give us a chance to...
What exactly is this packet of information you're passing out, just so?
It's copies.
Can you check your mic, too?
I think it's on. It just...
You're right, it's not on. In anticipation that the board may want to see an example of a similar house or the type of house that he might be seeking to build, Exhibit A is
Okay, there's...
A picture.
Okay. You've got numerous things in here, though. I'm just trying to understand entirely. I mean, this isn't just...
Right. As it relates to Lot 2501, only Exhibit A and B is...
Okay, but you've handed out other documents, so...
Right. And when we get to the other lot with the variances, those things may come up and...
I think what, I think, I think what we need, if you hand it out to them, you need to tell what it is so that we can mark the exhibit appropriately or call it what it is. So if we want to go page by page and just say what it is, so we can get that into the record, since you've submitted it all to us.
All right. Let me finish passing these out. And then we can go through it. Because there are two lots, I was really just focusing on one lot at a time. Okay, does everyone have a copy? Okay. So if you turn to your packet, Exhibit A...
Okay, but let's start with, we start with a page, it's number three at the end, dated February 4, 2015.
Right.
That's a page which...
It indicates 32 buffer drive, and it outlines the variance requests and the reasons for the variances, why the variance request is being made. And that's something as we go...
Okay, so this is just a summary of the justification for the various...
Yeah, exactly. Just so it's something to follow along with when we start to discuss it.
So why don't we call that A1?
Oh, you want to make that an exhibit itself?
You've handed it into the board. You want them to consider it.
Oh.
So...
Okay.
Either they have it or they don't have it, so...
Understood. I was really just kind of providing it as an outline, so when I go over those things, that you kind of have something to follow. But I understand if you want to make an Exhibit A1 would be the most clear.
I would like that.
A itself is a previously approved section of the subdivision plans. Highlighted on the left-hand side, as you can see, there's a gray shaded area. And then there's a, on top of the gray shaded area, a clear area. So this is an example. The gray shaded area was the footprint that was approved by the previous subdivision plans. The clear area is the proposed design, again, not specific, but likely design of the house that would be, in fact, built.
Why don't we call that A2?
Exhibit B is four pages. The first page, called Front Elevation, is an example of architecturally what a house, the house may look like. The second page labeled Rear Elevation, Right Side Elevation, and Left Side Elevation. So you can see all four sides of the house, and again, architecturally, what they would be likely to look like.
Okay, why don't we make the Front Elevation A3, the Rear Elevation A... Okay, why don't we make the front elevation A3, the rear elevation A4, the right side elevation A5, and the left side elevation A6?
What I have labeled as exhibit C is the certificate of occupancy relating to lot 25.02, 32, commonly known as 32 buffer drive.
Okay, we'll call that A7.
And what I have labeled as exhibit D is the township of Franklin's construction code enforcement list.
Excuse me, where's the floor plan for the house?
So if you look at A2, the plan, the picture...
What, which one are we looking at?
What we have labeled now as A2...
That's not a floor plan. That's a, that's a, that's a site plan.
Right.
With modular units on it.
Right.
What is the floor plan for the dwelling he wants to build?
Um, is this what you want to do?
They didn't...
Right. So the issue that we're having is that we're seeking a relief from, of conditions from having to build something specific. So, and I know you do want an example...
If you're leaving points for a house, that's fine. Nothing wrong with that. But where's the floor plan for the house that you're submitting? Are we saying you're not going to build this one?
This is an example of like the type, okay? So we do have, I mean, he does have some floor plans, but do, don't want to get in the same situation on that occurred when initially got the subdivision, which was this is the exact house you have to build. So what we're seeking is, doesn't have to build that specific house, but has to comply.
Okay, can I, can I just interrupt, guys?
Yeah.
So I'm going to, I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to cut to the chase here. We're going to be here all night because we're not off to, we're not off to a rousing start. Do you have the technical review committee's report?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, well, that's probably like a key document. So there, there are nine things on there, well, really probably about six or seven, that the technical review committee, after reviewing your plans, has recommended. And if you, if you want not to have those things, we need to go succinctly, point by point, and have you tell us why you shouldn't do that. I mean, even the largest subdivision developer that we've ever had in the township that builds, you know, I don't know, hundreds of houses, it's been a while, other than maybe than Summerfield, since we've had some, something like that come through, but, you know, there's specific architectures, there's specific footprint. Even with these warehouses, we had a little more detail than sort of this, this generic thing here. So that's your point number one. Point number two, your rear yard setback and shed, multiple points, three, four, and other ones, your impervious coverage, go to that. I'm just trying, I'm struggling to hear in any of your comments why we should vary from what the technical review committee has recommended. And if, if, I mean, we're not...
I'm sorry, if I could interrupt because we're not seeking any kind of variance. I mean, whatever variance, whatever was previously approved in the subdivision, he's going to comply with.
Well, then we're done.
So the only, so the only issue...
If that was true, we wouldn't be here, though.
In relation, the only issue in relation to this particular undeveloped property is, does he have to build the same exact house?
Yeah, but that's not all you're asking for. I mean, you're asking for other, other, other stuff as well. I mean, and, and, you know, the board clearly, you know, without going any further into the, you know, around point one of the document that you, that you don't have, the TRC comments, we just don't seem to know what it is you're going to build. I mean, you're like, well, we're going to build this, but maybe not specifically that. I mean, we don't know what we're approving and I don't see that we could go on for more time, but I don't see that changing. And, you know, you know the old saying, right? Doing the same thing over and over again?
Yeah, I would think, Mike, I would, I would think, Mike, what, what they're, they're, they're trying to request for the relief of conditions, which we've kind of done in the past, is they're giving us a basic architectural style and a basic footprint and the rest they're going to comply with because what happened was when they submitted for a house that was significantly different, we had to say no. They want something that is basically like that so that when they come in and they're going to, this house, if it's incredibly different, we're going to say no, we're going to kick it back, but it's, it's general. And you've done, you've done that in the past.
So, yeah, but I struggle, Vince, with actually what we're trying to approve here.
You're, well, in, in, you're not, you're not actually approving the exact house. You're approving something that's going to be somewhat similar to that. That's, that's what they're asking for.
So what are, really what we're asking for the board to approve is...
And that's fine.
For the board to say, you don't have to build that exact same house that we had approved prior.
So let me turn the question the other way around. Can you produce a drawing of what you would like to build so that we could say yes? Not of what you might build, not of what maybe if he changes his mind tomorrow, he'd like to build, but what he will build and a drawing of that. It's really not that difficult. And then we know, because I'm not, does anybody on the board know what the hell these guys want to build or am I a lone wolf here?
I'm only confused, but I thought he was here for relief of conditions.
Well, I thought that too.
Including the shed and we need testimony that's going to justify relieving his conditions. And I guess one of those conditions is somehow we specified he has to build a certain kind of house, which I've never heard of before, but maybe that happened.
I don't know. Ted?
Right now, I think you're only talking about the hot house on lot 25.01.
That is correct.
So let's wait until we get to the shed. You've submitted a plan. Admittedly, it took some pulling of teeth to get even a plot plan showing 25.01, but it does show an approximate layout of the house. And then you tonight have given us exhibits which show approximately what the house would look like. I don't think it's really our concern what the internal floor plan is. I think that you ought to be able to specify the square footage of the house that you're proposing and certainly the side yards. And with respect to the side yards, I don't see why the house is off-center on the lot. I would think it ought to have equal side yards on either side. I suppose I'll be told that that was all settled in 2007, but...
That's correct.
Oh, I...
So, that issue with the side yard was in fact dealt with in 2008 and it is off-centered because it is consistent with the neighborhood and that's why it was done like that. And that, again, we're not seeking to change that, just, do you know the approximate? So the total square footage, it would be around approximately 2,500 square feet. So the, so the previously approved house is 3,600.
You know, actually, let's just do something and swear Mike Gianato in because he's making ex parte, you know, comments to you, so it's...
Well, I mean, I don't...
No, no, I know.
No, I understand. Well, it's, we'd rather, if there's going to be testimony regarding what the applicant is proposing, it's better that it comes from the applicant. So if you could stand for me? If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name, spell your last name, and give your address?
Michael F. Gianotto, G.I.A.N.O.T.T.O.
And your addresser?
32 Buffa Drive, Summers.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, so as a, so, Mr. Gianotto, what was the previous, the square footage that was approved and required by the board in the 2008 subdivision approval?
3,600 square feet.
And what is the approximate square footage of the home that you would like to build on the undeveloped lot, lot 25.01?
Approximately 2,600 square feet.
Okay, so it's a significant reduction in size. Is that correct? So the, and that's consistent with the footprint that was provided to the board. So the relief that he's seeking is to build a smaller house by approximately 1,000 square feet. But again, a house that complies with all the previously required and the previously approved variances granted by the board and included in the subdivision approval.
Yeah, go ahead, Carl.
Mr. Gianotto, the house that's proposed on, I guess it's lot 2501, the vacant lot, that was originally proposed to be the sister house of the one that is currently at number 32, right?
Sister, yes, it was supposed to be similar.
Okay. That house originally had a side entry garage. This one I see as part of the site plan is a front entry garage?
That's correct.
So is there any reason that it can't be shifted to be centered on the lot?
Well, as I said to Mr. Chase, what we, originally we had it shifted over, so it was center. And then we were told that it wasn't consistent with the neighborhood's side yards up the street. So we changed it and made the side yard consistent with what the neighbors, what the other houses are like. And that's why it off-centered. Additionally, there's two large oak trees and if I move it, I'm going to have to take that tree down because the driveway would be right in the way if I move it to the right. You can, I don't know if you can see that, but there's a, at that time it was nine inch. Now it's 14 inch oak.
So you're, you're talking about the, the oak tree. How would the oak tree be affected?
Well, it's, it's, it's where it is now. If you look at the, the plot plan where it shows the new house and the driveway in front of the two-car garage, if I move it to the right, it places the driveway right in the path of the oak. Now I could come and circle that oak tree and be at least 15 feet away from it and curve it down towards the street. But if I move it over, then I lose that tree. But more specifically, it's to be consistent with the side yards, which my engineer had changed from the original plan to this plan.
You're talking about the fir tree, not the oak tree? 10-inch fir tree?
No, I'm talking about the nine inch, it says nine inch oak tree.
The tree is to the left. The fir tree is to the right. Move the house to the right.
Yeah, you know, that, I can take the tree down. That's not, I mean, I don't want to, but I could. However, it's more, the side yards there are the same in my house and the same in my other neighbor's house. In fact, the neighbor on my right, his side yard is only six feet from my house.
All right, so, let's see if I can, I can interject again here and, and offer some guidance. So it says on point one, the TRC has no issue with the change, recommends that the board review the elevations, approve a house that is as per the elevations and plan are substantially similar. So they've given us some drawings of elevations, they've given us a footprint, as Ted pointed out, and the actual architecture or treatments of the house is sort of not within our purview too much. So the, what the unbuilt house will look like on lot 25.01 is probably the least of our problems. The bigger issues, I think, are on, as built the lot on 2502. So in the interest of time, I think we ought to start trying to hit those because I think the house on 2501, the union have given us a footprint, I agree with Carl's input, that at least should look the same. I know the oak tree is there, that's true, so, you know, it is what it is. You want to kind of move on to the 2502?
Yeah, as long as the board doesn't have any questions.
If you look at the plot plan, it shows you a driveway.
Right.
If you look at the elevations, the driveway's on the other side of the house.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you move it from the elevation, it's going to interfere. If you either flip, just flip the house and you don't have to worry about any trees and you can put it in the middle of the lot where it belongs.
Okay, can you do that?
Could you, so I think, I'm sorry, I think the question is, could you flip the house to center it?
Here's the problem. You showed a drawing and you show a proposed driveway.
The old house.
What a whole house. Here's what you're showing is a new house.
No, the, the original house that we planned has the driveway...
The original house that you planned, what is this that I'm looking at here?
You're looking at the original house that was planned, the 3,600 square foot.
And where's the new house?
Imposed, pardon me?
Where is the new house?
Imposed within that area of the original house. It's lighter shade.
Yeah, all right.
And the driveway in this particular house, because of the configuration of where the rooms lay, the garage is on the left side as opposed to the right side of the original house.
So just flip the house. Do it the opposite way, put the driveway and flip the house. Then you can get the house in there, satisfy the board, put it in the middle of the lot.
I can't, I can't put it in the middle of the lot.
Why not?
Because this is the way the variance is read. I have 12 points...
You're here asking for relief.
Relief of condition of the type of house, sir.
All right, do what you want. Ridiculous.
So what they're saying is they don't, they're not asking for that, for relief of conditions on that lot, other than, other than the design of the house. None of the setbacks, none of the side yards, none of anything. And I think what they're trying to tell you is that if you were to flip it, then you would start to incur those variances.
Yes, that is correct.
But you haven't provided a plan showing the driveway for the house you now propose.
That is correct. However, again, unfortunately, we seem to be in a different...
So are we saying that if, if we flipped the house in the middle, we would need variances or we would need different variants? Because I, I, what I'm hearing is that the board, if you flip the house and you put it in the middle, it seems the board is, that's what they're leaning towards, that if there were variances that needed to be granted, the board would probably grant those variances if needed because they'd rather have it in the middle. But I'm not sure there would be variances because we don't have anything that shows that. But I think that's what the board is saying. They would prefer that, prefer that layout even if there were additional relief that needed to be granted. Right? Is that...
Right. And, and I mean, we can't put them in double jeopardy. We either have to say we grant the relief of the house that they're showing us with no variances, or if we ask them to flip the house, that we're prepared to grant them the necessary variances to do that.
Right.
And I don't know what those variances would be.
Well, flipping the house would not require changing the prior variances if it's still on basically the same footprint with the same side yards. It would simply leave the driveway where in fact it is shown on the only plan we have. Now, as for where it's located, I'm just concerned with some of the concerns of the neighbor at number 28, who at the last hearing expressed concern about runoff onto his property because this property is a little higher than his property. And I see that there was, engineering had strongly suggested having a dry well. And I think if you had a...
It's got to be dry.
A dry well and you made sure that the grading directed the runoff to the dry well rather than onto the neighbor's property, and the way the land is right now, it probably would go onto the neighbor's property. If, if you design it so that the runoff does not go onto the neighbor's property, then I wouldn't be so concerned about the side yard.
You know...
I can flip.
I'm going to apologize ahead of time, but it sounds to me right now that we're no different than we were two months ago. And I understand this is a one-house application. Why can't the decision be made about the house? Why can't the decision be made about the house that's going to be built, a plan put together and presented to the board? Then we don't have to sit there and discuss if we flip it, maybe this variance will be a little less, maybe we won't have this one. This application could probably have been decided in fifteen minutes. And I'm starting personally to resent the waste of the board's time. We're looking at one house. We're approaching the time spent on this hearing that we spent on a twenty warehouse project.
And more if you consider how many times they've been back. No, I'm, I'm, I'm in total agreement, I'm in total agreement with Bob.
And we're trying to make this as simple as possible, not changing any of the variances, not changing what was previously approved, just saying, we don't have to build the same house. And I understand the board's, you know, questions or concerns, but again, if we start shifting these things, then it impacts the other aspects of the lot, and that's what we're trying to minimize. And that's why we started with this, and as I indicated, it was pretty straightforward. So, I understand the board's frustration because we feel equally frustrated, we're not trying to wait the time.
It's not our job to rework your plan, which is what we end up doing. I, I'll go back to saying if this were, that we have these routinely at the Board of Ajustment, where people are building houses that require variances. And at the end of the day, there's a, there's a plan, and there's a picture, and we say, is this what we get? And they agree that this is the house that we got. What's so difficult about telling us what one house is that you're going to build and show a plan? We haven't dealt with the issue from the last meeting yet with the neighbor, and I don't see how we're in any better position to deal with it tonight, because we don't know anymore.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a garage on the left-hand side with a driveway on the right-hand side, and, and we're supposed to sort of juxtapose those in our minds. And the driveway is right if we flip the house, but it's not right the way the house looks now. I mean, the only thing that comes to mind is, you know, that AT&amp;T ad, your internet's half-assed, and so is your plan.
Okay. This seems to be any more complicated. Based on the T, the TRC report, I understand that the, the recommendation is that, that there's no objection by the town. Is that correct?
The, 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 the T, yeah, but we're dealing, the TRC's dealing just with the technical review, the, the board is dealing with some of the other issues. And one of the issues they're dealing with is that we know we're gonna have someone from the public, because they are the last time that it now owns the adjacent lot, and you're asking for relief of conditions, and that, those people on that don't want the house as close, which is the, so the board's trying to find a way to be able to grant the relief of conditions, and at the same time, satisfy the neighbor, which is, which is what, which what they're supposed to do. So, and, and now they're, now they're stuck in a position where they're not quite sure what they're gonna approve, and I think the neighbor wants to know what they're gonna approve. And I don't think they, the board has a, a big problem with approving something that's gonna be architecturally the same and the same type of footprint, but now they're concerned about where it's gonna be, because we're gonna have the neighbor. So, I think, I think what the board is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they would like the house more centered, and they would like to see a plot plan that shows the house more centered, and you can come back and show them that, and then they'd be in a better position to review that. Is that-
Okay, I mean, if that is something-
That the board's leaning to, and that, you know, we don't, we don't have a problem with the reduction of the footprint. We don't have a problem with the layout per se, other than the, you know, orientation.
Right.
And that's fine, and we're not looking for detailed architectures, but we need some, a little bit. I mean, it's like Jim pointed out, where it says proposed driveway, it's not the proposed driveway anymore. But if you flip the house, you know, where the drive, where the garage is now on the left-hand side, there is no driveway. So, if you did what they said we would, the driveway would be right. And then we get into the, what I hate, which is, we're, we're, we're a board that gives guidance, we're not an engineering board, we're a planning board. I'm not drawing up the damn plan for them, and nobody on this board is gonna do it either.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think, to be fair to the, the public, we know the public's gonna wanna see exactly where this house and the driveway is gonna be, so that they can feel comfortable in giving comments to the board.
Yeah.
Without speaking for them, but they've been in, so I think that's what they're gonna wanna see. And I think the board's reacting to that, because they know what the public comment's gonna be, they're kinda-
Plus, like to see a dry well located.
Well, the, the dry well, the dry well is in the engineering report, and that's, that has to be done as per the ordinance.
It's just that, on, on both boards, to me, it, it seems to me, are historically very lenient when it comes to an individual homeowner wanting to do a single application, or one, one single dwelling on one lot. And, but we get cooperation. I don't feel that's been coming. This has been months. Again, you know, just do it once, right.
And it, it seems though that the issues that we're discussing here tonight are a little bit different, in the sense of flipping the house, centering the house, and making plans to do that. And the board expressing its willingness to change other variances if that needs to be done. I mean, that's not something that I was aware of, that the board was willing to do.
Well, what I, what I would suggest-
Make a minimal application.
Yeah, what I, what I would suggest is, is one of two things for you, is either you say that you wanna proceed with the application exactly as it is, where the house is, and the board will then make a decision whether they're gonna relief of condition, and they may say no. Or I would highly suggest that you come back at another meeting with a new plot plan that shows the house closer to the middle, where the driveway's gonna be, so the board can know that, and the public can know. I think you should, we should do one or the other. Say you wanna move forward with the application as is and take your chances, because we're just spinning our wheels right now.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I think we just wanna move, we, Mr. Gianato just wants to move forward with the application. Because what we're talking about here and discussing here would be a complete and total change from what we're presenting here tonight. And I don't think that's appropriate.
All right, well, then I would suggest that you're asking to relief of conditions with what you've submitted, and the board can make a decision whether they're gonna do that or deny that. I think we should move forward to the, the variances on the other lot then. On the, the exist, where the existing, Mr. Gianato's existing house is, and we can talk about those.
Yes.
Because at-
I wanted to ask, does Mr. Gianato agree to put in a dry well or not?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
I'm sorry, yes, I did.
Good.
Okay, so moving on to the variance requests. So, these are requests for lot 25.02. That lot is, currently, the Gianatos live there, it is developed. There's three variances, requests being made. One is in relation to the shed. Initially, Mr. Gianato was going to move the shed and not seek the variance, however, after actually trying to move the shed, there are two large trees, mature trees in the backyard, and unfortunately, to move the shed, it interferes, the trees get in the way. So, the shed cannot be moved. So, he is continuing to seek that variance. It's fourteen feet from the twenty-five feet, foot standard. The other, the other variance that is being sought is a lot coverage variance. The lot coverage is currently approved at twelve point five, and based on what is existing, he needs a variance to twelve point eight. The last is the impervious coverage on the lot. From the twenty percent, he is seeking a variance to twenty-five point six. So, I have provided to the board the specific as-built drawing of the lot. So, you can see exactly what's there and what's existing.
This is the document you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's not labeled.
Right, it's the first page of a three-page handout, it's, it's a Parker Engineering survey dated September 4th, 2014, entitled Survey of the Property Township of Franklin, Somerset County, New Jersey, tax map lot, tax map, lot 25.02, block eighty-four point oh three. I believe we are up to A8 is our last exhibit number. So, we'll make this first page, A8.
Sorry, I'm trying to get things right from the, from the old, the old routing sheet from the Technical Review Committee, because they had variances listed on 2501 that have since been eliminated, so I wanted to make sure the board didn't pay attention to those. So, sorry. So, everything on this 2502 stems from the shed, and its inability to be removed. That sort of takes care of the impervious, or rather, the lot coverage. And the impervious is not just the shed, I think, but the, the stone and gravel, right, that were installed, that were now, that the applicant had considered to be pervious, but is not considered by the township to be impervious. Am I right?
That is correct. So, the request for the variance does against them from the fact that they cannot move the shed because of the trees, and the pervious stone that is considered by the town as impervious.
And Vince, can I ask you, from the standpoint of the Technical Review Committee, what's, what's the, since the TRC reviewed this, what was, what was-
Well, the, the TRC pointed out that the, the shed was supposed to have been removed, it wasn't. They pointed out that the lot coverage variance was because of the shed, and the, the, they were concerned with the total impervious coverage, because the impervious coverage is slightly above even what the R20 standard would be. It's, the R20 standard is twenty-five, and they're asking for something above that. So, they were, they were concerned that it's even above the greater standard for the lot as it exists. So, that, that was the three concerns.
One question, did you say the shed was supposed to be removed?
The shed, the shed was supposed to be removed, it was-
Why it can't be removed?
Well-
I mean, it can't be moved, because there's trees in the way.
Well, they, they-
But if it could be removed?
If, if they decided to do that, yes. Yes.
When, who decided to do it?
The applicant.
Not to remove it?
The applicant could, of course, remove it if they wanted to.
That was your original approval, to remove it?
Yes.
And, however, if you look at A2, this was the previous, the approved plan. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, that's lot 2502. And you can see in the designation, shed to be removed. There are two sheds on the property. The, the larger shed was in fact removed. The smaller shed, which is not designated to be removed-
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, the, the, the resolution specifically referenced the reports, and my report at that time specifically said that both sheds needed to be removed or a variance would be needed. No variance was granted, it was supposed to be in conformance with the report. The plan, that was the plan submitted to the board, that plan was not changed, but the resolution clearly indicated that they must comply with the reports, which was to remove both sheds. So, the, the approval, the approval was clearly meant to remove both sheds. Now, Mr. Gianato may not have understood that completely, but there's no question, in fact, that the approval was to remove, and the board conditioned it upon the approval on both sheds being removed, or they would have had to grant the variance, which they did not grant.
However, there was an inspection of the property, and as indicated, I think it's-
The inspection of the property was done by the Construction Department, which does not, which does not look at the shed, and there was no, the, the original as-built that was submitted didn't show the shed. So, we, we shouldn't really argue about whether or not the shed had to be removed. I can tell you, it's crystal clear that the approval, I mean, it's easy for an applicant to misunderstand some, I'm not arguing with that. But the approval definitely said the shed had to be removed, it wasn't. And that's for the board to decide whether it should or shouldn't be allowed to be made.
And normally, when those conditions are imposed by a board, it's discussed orally at the meeting, and it's agreed on by the applicant or the applicant's attorney, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, and this all comes back to the fact that the original approval did allow the applicant the, the lower bar of the R20 zoning, which already gave them greater impervious coverage, vis-à-vis R40. So, it would be a particularly high bar for the board to then ask, you know, be asked to exceed that. That's kinda where we are. And the shed makes a lot of issues go away. So, I guess really, it's up to the board to decide whether they wanna issue those variances, because I haven't heard anything from the applicant that says they're gonna remove the shed. So, we can go around and around, but I suppose it's better to just take them at face value and make a decision.
Yes, and I mean, we did, as soon as they learned of the variance being needed, then the application was in fact made. But again, there was, based on the, the drawing and the approved plans.
Yeah, I mean, it's perfectly fine, you wouldn't be the first applicant to come to, you know, say, no, this is what we wanna do, and, 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 you know, cast their lot with the board. So, if that's what you wanna do, then that's what we'll do. Do we, does the board have any other questions based on this? So, let's-
Carl. Carl. With, with the, with keeping the shed, and then the additional impervious patio pavers and stone in the backyard, that lot, per the September 25th, 2014 Engineers Report, is also gonna require a dry well.
Yes, and the applicants are willing to put it, install the dry well, if the board grants the variances, so it's all consistent, and so it complies with those new. That's not, that's not a problem.
Could we, could we put a condition of approval that the design is done within a certain timeline?
If, if, if-
And bonded before we sign off on the plan?
I think that if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna approve that, then you, that would be a reasonable condition, that it'd be, it'd be installed and bonded, you know, within a reasonable, if that's gonna be the approval to allow that variance.
We have no objection to a timeline, but the bonding-
Well, the bond, the bonding has to be done, that, that, that's a requirement.
The bonding's per ordinance.
Yeah, you don't have, you don't have any choice.
All right.
All right, so I think what we should do is open this to the public. Do you have a motion to do that?
Motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor? Anybody from the public wish to come forward? Please use the podium and state your name and address. And make sure the microphone's on. If it's not, I can help you.
Okay, no, I did not, she was a more difficult.
Okay, is it on?
Uh, it sounds like it.
Okay, I'm Jennifer Fréjeulle.
If you could just raise your right hand for me, do you swear the testimony you're gonna provide is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give your address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Fréjeulle, F as in Frank, R-E-G-E-O-L-L-E. I live at 28 Buffett Drive. We would, I'm a little confused about where we stand now. I, if we get, are we able to see the plans that Mr. Gianato is producing, has given you?
Yeah, you can take-
Plans that Mr. Gianato has not given us.
I was gonna say, just-
Oh, I'm, I meant the, the site plan.
And just for the record, that's a copy of A2 that was provided?
Yes.
Okay. So, we know what we're looking at.
Okay, so, I wanted to confirm, and maybe Mr. Gianato can help with this, is this the plan of the garage being twelve feet from the property line, and the house being twenty feet from the property line?
This gray area is the old house, and it was twelve feet, twenty-seven inches old property. With the new house, it becomes twelve and twenty-seven plus eleven and some at that point.
Does the board need them to speak more clearly, so you can hear their conversation, or is that okay?
Oh, well, at the end of the day, I think what they're referring to is, is Exhibit A, and, and the dimensions there on?
A2.
I just wanted to make sure.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Our concern, I guess that this is where our confusion is too. Our concern is that where Mr. Gianato is going forward and taking his risk that the board will turn this, turn this down, this new plan. This plan, the garage, it's only the garage that's 12 feet from our property line. The house itself is 20 feet from our property line. We would love for the whole house to be more centered on the property because we don't know of other houses on the block that are this close to the property lines, 6 feet, 12 feet, because this is, we're zoned for R20. And I believe this is the R40 zone, the variance that he got?
It's an R40 zone, yes.
It's an R40 zone, but he gets a variance to build that aren't.
Okay, I'm sorry, I reversed those. Okay. If the house can't be centered, more centered on this piece of property, we're concerned that the original variance is at 12 feet from the property line, or sorry, 14 feet. We're concerned that Mr. Gianato might go back to the larger house plan that he originally had. So if the board doesn't approve this, we, I guess we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. This plan is 12 feet away, the garage is 12 feet away, the bulk of the house is 20 feet from us, from the property line. So this is a better plan than turning him down and risking that he build the larger house on this property only 14 feet from our house.
Okay.
Is that?
I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. So if it's, we'd love the whole thing to be moved further away from us. It's just, it's so close to us. It's 36 feet from his property line, 12 from ours. If it cannot be moved a further distance, the 24 feet, that's reasonable for this, for the rest of the neighborhood, we'd like it moved as far as possible. And barring that, oh, and whenever it does get built up, we'd like some kind of screening, whether it's 12 feet, 14 feet, 20 feet. If we can, if he can be required to put up a fence or something that will, you know, be a barrier between the, the two properties.
Is that?
Can I just say one thing?
Sure, in the microphone?
Yeah. Is it on? The, your, the new house will actually be 16, 16 and a half feet closest to your property.
The garage or the home?
The garage.
So you're saying?
Right here, see, this is the garage. That measurement is 16.56. So it's 16 and a half, about 16 and a half feet at the closest here. And then 20, 11, 23 feet here. So it's actually 16, 17 feet from your property.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Simon.
It's just a, one, 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 three, yeah. It's so confusing because you, you may just approve the relief of conditions and you may at the same time just grant.
Okay. So overall, if, if the house cannot be centered on the property, Mr. Gianato has informed us that the garage is actually 16 feet, the house itself is 23 feet. If, if you see fit to move it further from our property line, that would be our ideal scenario. Otherwise, this is, this is far from our property line. We're happier with this than we were with the 12 feet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. As to the issue of screening, I don't know, you know, I obviously know between different residential, you know, uses or different uses, there's screening in the, in the general ordinances. I don't know about.
Well, you can, you, there's a variance and a relief of condition here, so that if you wanted to put some reasonable condition on screening, you, you have the right to do it as long as it's reasonable in nature. I mean, you can't make them put, you know, 14 rows of 40-foot evergreens, but you've done this for many years, so you know what is reasonable.
Is anybody else from the public wishing to speak on this application?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move that the public hearing on this application be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so what we're going to do to make this a little easier, I think, for the board, is we're going to split this vote and we're going to vote for, we're going to make a motion and we're going to have a vote on the 2501. That is the lot that's unbuilt, where we're talking about, you know, flipping it and setbacks and such not. And then we're going to have a second vote on, on the variances for 2502. And our attorney informs me that that's, that's perfectly reasonable. So I think that'll make things easier because I, I don't know that, you know, I, I think those issues are separate. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for the relief of conditions for Lot 25.01, the unbuilt lot, that would be the change in the architecture of the house, the cha, the reduction in the square footage, and the plan that we saw tonight is, as on Exhibit A2. So I'll, I'll start with that motion, just if anyone cared to make that.
We'd like to amend it a little bit.
Okay. Well, I haven't really sort of made it, I sort of just suggested so you can, you can make it.
The reduction in square footage should be limited to 2,600 square feet. That was a testimony given.
Mm-hmm. True.
The idea of screening, I, I would think you might want to get input from the neighbors, whether they would want a natural screen, a fence, a wood fence, or a plastic fence, or some sort of height.
I think you can ask him now if you want.
Well, they're sworn in, so I guess they can do that.
Let's have this is.
Yeah. You're the only one there.
We'd prefer natural screening, arborvitae's or some sort of fast-growing green, evergreen.
Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
Those are the two main things I can.
And a minimum of 16, a 16-foot side yard, as he testified, not 12.
Are you, are you, would you make that motion, Bob?
I'll add that.
Yes.
You'll add that to the motion?
And if I could just add one thing that hadn't been included, but the, in architectural style as indicated on Exhibits A3, 4, 5, and 6, because I think they presented you with a style and that's the style you like, not necessarily the, the actual house, but they're not going to come in with something that's distinctly different from that.
Fair enough.
Before the board places its vote, because I was trying to jot everything down, I just want to go over. So what you're discussing and voting upon is architectural style consistent with A4, I'm sorry, A4 through A8?
It was A3, 4, 5, and 6.
Okay, A3 through A6.
Those were the, the different elevations of the home.
Natural screening, reduction in square footage.
To no more than 2,600.
To no more than 2,600.
Okay, Mike, could you, do you got to talk into the mic or it won't pick up?
When I was asked what the square footage was, it is 2,600 square feet for the home. Then the garage adds 655 square feet. I was asked what the house was, and that's what I said. Now, going through my numbers here, it's 1,181 square feet for the top floor.
The top floor doesn't count. It's all, they're talking the footprint, I think, is what we want, right?
Yeah.
Then the footprint is only 1,378 plus the garage 655, so it's 2,000 square feet.
Well, they're just saying no more than, correct?
Right.
If you're talking about footprint and not the total square footage of the house.
Right, right. Well, the first and second floors are generally on top of each other, so you don't.
I know that, but when I was asked for the square footage of the house, I, I gave you the square.
Just the footprint.
It, to be clear.
Okay, just the footprint.
But the board is saying no more, so if you're less than that, it's okay. Correct? Okay.
And, and Mike, I would say that.
So a reduction, no more than 2,600.
The, the screening, the screening should be run by staff, so it's inconsistent with the other type of screening, if you, if you don't mind that.
No, that, that's fine, but natural screening.
Yeah, natural screening inconsistent with other type of screening that.
At least four feet high.
And she has mentioned 16 foot.
16-foot side, side, no, no less than 16-foot side, side from, from the garage. In other words, the nearest point of any structure, since our applicant seems to make it, not necessarily include the garage in this, the nearest point to any structure to the side yard, no nearer than 16 feet. How's that? That's.
And that's the side yard it shares with Lot 26.
Yeah, and 28 Buffett, whatever that is.
Right, exactly, just so we.
Yep. Okay, so seeing, seeing as I.
And the dry well.
I guess that's my motion to make.
Okay, well, and, and one other thing.
Oh, installation of the dry well?
Yeah, that, that was what I was going to make.
Well, they already said they had to do that.
But might as well.
That's been agreed, but you might want to put there.
Yep, absolutely.
So is, the motion's been, we're done with the motion now, so I can call it. Councilman Chase?
Did we get a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah. Councilman Chase?
With all those conditions, yes.
Mr. Howe?
No.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Ms. MacIver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Ms. Onyaka?
With all conditions, yes.
Mr. Pettit?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
That motion passes. Now we're on to the 2501.
Okay, so the second motion will be concerning Lot 25.02, that which is already built. The applicant is asking for in total a rear yard setback where 25 feet is the minimum and 14.09 feet is proposed for Lot 25.02. Lot coverage where 12.5% is the maximum and 12.8% is requested. And impervious coverage where 20% is the maximum and 25.6 is requested for that lot. Just to let, just to be fair, the TRC recommended that the, that the minimum, that a minimum the applicant comply with the 25% R20 standard. So the 20% is R40, the 25% is R20. They're asking for 25.6. And so the motion would be to approve all those for the lot that's already, has a house on it, Lot 25.02. And a dry well.
Or to approve something else.
And a dry well, right?
Dry well with a timeline, I would say 90 days is acceptable.
Okay.
For design and posting of bonds.
Okay. I'll add that, I'll amend my motion to add that.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
So I sort of just made it. Can you second it?
Oh, okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
Councilman Chase?
I think this is the, I'm sure Mr. Dominack feels that the applicant is getting away with evading a condition of the original approval, but I don't think it's worth fighting over.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. La Court?
Yes.
Ms. MacIver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
Ms. Onyaka?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm going to vote no because I think two of the variances could be substantially eliminate, or closer to being eliminated by removal of the shed, which was a firm, clear condition, and I don't see any reason why it can't be.
Chairman Arcini?
I'm also going to vote no, not only for the reason that Mr. Thomas just said, but also because I thought that the R20 zoning standards provided sufficient leeway for this applicant, and there's no reason for it to be exceeding that. So my vote would be no.
Motion passes, Mr. Chairman.
Happens sometimes. Okay, um, let's go to.
Summerfields.
Summerfields. Come on up, people.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a five-minute break?
Brutal. Let's take a half hour. By the time they get set up, you'll have your five minutes. I'm really surprised that passed. I don't want to come back. I think that's repeated. Team, everybody. You know, we had our shed damaged by Hurricane Sandy. I'm a 69-year-old woman. I went out there with a circular saw and cut that shed up into chunks that were small enough to fit into our garbage bin. And every week, our garbage can was full and they took it in a wet. Yes! And you know, I had trees that I.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for site plan approval for a, for certain retail buildings as part of the project that is known as Summerfields Franklin LLC, Lot 516.09, Lot 55 in the PAC zone. This one will also require about two minutes of history. In 2005, this project was approved, the Summerfields project, as part of a planned adult community. One of the components of the project was a requirement that commercial space be provided. We are in here tonight for the site plan for the commercial space. The remainder of the project is a various mix of residential dwellings, from single-family detached dwellings to townhouses, to apartments, to 50 senior affordables, which were all part of the approval, and there have been some amendments as the years have gone on. But, right now, what is before the board this evening is the site plan approval for the retail space at the intersection of Schoolhouse and Rand- I do have three witnesses in this application. I will try to be very brief, because I know the evening is getting late. I do have the site engineer, the architect, and Mr. Dean, our traffic consultant. I will start with the site engineer, Mr. Aardman.
You know, since Mr. Aardman's been before this board a zillion times, he's accepted, just have him sworn in.
Okay.
Do you swear the testimony? You're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do, and thank you, Mr. Arcini, and I am still licensed.
If you could just state your name for the record and spell your last name, and provide us with your address.
Certainly, F. Mitchell Aardman, A-R-D-M-A-N, 626 North Thompson Street, Raritan.
And, Mr. Aardman, just for the record, your credentials have not been detrimentally affected since last year appeared and qualified before this board?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And also, just for the record, you are both licensed engineer and also professional planner, and will be proffering a little bit of planning testimony, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Just a little bit.
Yeah. Mr. Aardman, you have prepared certain exhibits. Why don't you indicate to the board the first exhibit, so that we can orient the board to what we're doing, and then we'll go on to the site plan?
Certainly. We've pre-marked these. This is A1. This is an exhibit for the board, overall exhibit plan, OA1. In your set, there was an overall plan, but didn't cover the whole of the entire of the Summerfields complex. We have Schoolhouse Road on the bottom of the plan. We have Randolph Road to the right here, running north and south. Basically, just color-coded it, so you could see the different sections. As you may remember that you've seen the tan or the single-family sections, some of the multifamily sections in the northwest. The purple are the townhouses. Getting closer to the corner of the project where we are here in the purple, that's the retail development. We have, but in green, the recreational facilities that we have on site, and we have other, the blue, which is just to the west of our proposed retail component, we have the townhouses on site. So, again, just to orient the board, again, north is up on this plan.
Okay. And the total approved residential units are 900 units within the project, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And as part of the project, we were required to provide certain retail, and that retail, as you indicated, is on the corner of Randolph and Weston, I'm sorry, Randolph and Schoolhouse. How big a tract is it?
That's correct. 8.48 acres.
Okay. Can you please describe what we are providing?
Certainly.
And just for the record, I've provided a reduced version for the board members, so if they want to follow along.
Yep. This is the dimension plan, SP1, the same as in the main set, just been colorized with the landscaping, and we've marked this one as A2. As said, this is 8.48 acres. It's designated at this point now as Lot 55, Block 516.09. The site right now is a totally vacant site on the corner there, basically flat, some brush on the site right now, and it slopes gently and drains towards Randolph Road. Just behind it, you can see in this exhibit here, which is to the west, the sections of the townhouses behind it, and clearing and the preparation for development of those townhouses has begun in that area. What we show on this plan here is the plan development, and as Mr. Lanford said, there were approximately 33,000 square feet on the very initial plan unit development plan. This building here shows, this project here shows Building 1 in the tan here. It's approximately 20,790 square feet building. And the second building to the north is smaller, is 10,413 square feet. And again, the darker color here, Randolph Road, on the bottom is on the east, or on the east, correct, and then moving towards the west is Randolph Road, or Schoolhouse Road, excuse me. Peter, let me turn around. To access the site, we have a series of driveways, the main parking field in between the two buildings here. As you can see, we've broken the parking field up with a series of landscaping, a well landscaped aisle in the middle, as well as a well landscaped buffer between Randolph Road and the project. Secondary access to the property is on the northern end, that's one-way in, and we've basically created a loop behind all the buildings. That'll be good for deliveries as well, for any fire and emergency vehicles to give them full circulation all the way around the vehicles, all the way around, for the vehicles around the buildings. The trash enclosures will be located at the rear of those buildings as well, and have good access to them. The development, the parking area, is 173 parking spaces, as we have shown. That includes seven ADA accessible spaces, which are in closest proximity to the front main entrances of the buildings. From the beginning of this project, the applicant really wanted to do more than, much more than a basic strip center, and even more than some of your other developments in town where your ordinances have some enhanced development requirements. And as I go through the project, and actually some of the variances that we're gonna be asking for, several of those deal with the enhanced design that we're, have been looking to provide on the site. We worked early with staff, with Mr. Healy and Mr. Dominack, and they had some suggestions as well, and we've really tried to incorporate those into the project to provide the enhanced development. One of the key features of this, and the architect will show you and speak a little bit more in detail, is on the corner here, we talked about a site feature, something really to identify this. And I think we've seen all enough clock towers, so the applicant had the architect come up with something a little more distinct to the area and the history, and he can talk about it, the architect. But basically, it's an old-style millhouse that was put up on the corner here, and it's got some stone features and a small water feature associated with that. And we really think that provides a very unique element to the design of the project, and really will tie that as a landmark on this corner. As far as the usual development site amenities that, as you usually hear me speak, go out, stormwater management. We have a series of inlets all throughout the parking lot area. They'll drain to those inlets, the roof drains will be picked up as well. Stormwater management is handled by this basin, Basin L, it's been designated. That was designed, and I'm pointing back down to Exhibit A1, the corner here, as part of the full development in this, basically southeast corner of the Summerfields project. That basin was designed always to handle this development. The square footage of the impervious, as we now have it designed, is actually slightly less than the detention basin was designed for. So, it will more than adequately handle the stormwater runoff, which will all be piped to that detention basin. It'll handle the three main components, it'll recharge the waters required, will provide stormwater management to reduce the peak flows, and you'll get water quality out of that basin as well. As far as utilities to the site, we're fully accessed to water and sewer. There's water mains both on Randolph and Schoolhouse. We're gonna create a loop between the two. That'll help with the water pressure on site and keep good feeds to the buildings for all the services and laterals. For sanitary sewer, the residential component was designed with a stub coming to the site, so that's also fully accessible to the site to have sanitary sewer development. In regards to lighting and landscaping, as I said, we've tried to integrate that from the beginning into the project. The lighting will be a series for a shopping center, and particularly this area, relatively low-level lights, so it'll just be 15-foot high. What we're showing right now is 100-watt lights in that area. Mr. Healy had some suggestions about potentially some other style of lights, which we can talk about and easily work into the project as we go forward. The applicant has had success with this lighting, but the main focus of it is that it provides a nice, uniform light on the project, and it's low-level. To, as we know, we have the full residential development behind us. In comparison to some of the industrial sites that surround us, though, it'll be much lower than any of the typical lights you'll see in those developments. For the landscaping I started to describe, we basically have a series of layers of landscaping that we've provided through the site. A berm along Randolph Road, which will be planted, first with street trees, which will wrap around all the front edges of the project. On top of the berm, there'll be a series of evergreens, shrubs and trees, and also flowering trees that'll be placed there. And then, some more in between the street trees, there'll be some more shrubs and hedges. And those different layers, we feel, won't just be one big, you know, wall of the, you know, the same type of evergreen. It's really a good mix to give this shopping center a more design element to it. The plantings continue in that manner along the Schoolhouse Road side of the project. As I said, within the project, a nice landscaped island in the center of the project, and we've also focused the landscaping on portions of the building which are design elements. Part of those design elements are the outside spaces. So, we've provided ample seating areas around these buildings, as you started to see in town, and been incorporated in some of the shopping centers, more outside seating space. Well, we didn't want that as an afterthought. They were designed in, the architect really thought about the spaces, and we carried them over to the site plan. And so, on what, on the end caps, which might be some restaurant uses, we provide tables on pretty much all the ends, and we've actually provided a separate, really standalone patio along this Randolph Road side, which will have a nice fence around the patio and nice landscaping integrated around that patio as well. The only spot we've provided, just one truly dense landscape screen, is in the back, which will be full evergreens planted there in recognition of the townhouses that are behind us on the site.
Will there be a berm there also?
This property actually starts sloping down to us, so the way that this property slopes naturally from west to east, so we weren't able to create a berm, but we tried to make that up with the higher plantings in that area.
How high are the plantings?
Those are six-foot pines.
All right, Mr. Aardman, we are seeking some variances in conjunction with this application. Can you please, as you're going through it, describe the variances that we're seeking, and also, at the end, your justification for the grant of those variances?
Certainly. There are four main variances that we have, and Mr. Dominack listed those, as well as Mr. Healy. On the front, on the Randolph Road side, and it's, the minimum requirement building setback is 50 feet, and we have 43 feet proposed. And that is only for this one end section of the building toward Randolph Road. If you look closely on your plan, it's a little harder to see on the rendering, you have the solid line of the building, that is set at 50 feet, and then there's another dash line which comes out from the building. That dash line is actually part of the canopy structure, which gives architectural detail to the building. It's well detailed on the architectural plans, but that's one of the design elements that was brought into the building to give, you know, some of the unique nature to the shopping center. So, we feel that it's gonna be justified, and you'll hear me say this as I go through all these, the design elements that are really critical to the plan, some of them have created these variances to be required. But we think that the benefit of these design elements you'll see are worth it and are worth granting the variances. So, for that one, again, it's just that one section of the canopy, and again, it could be removed, but if it was removed, you'd have more of a blank wall facing the Randolph side instead of some more detail on the building.
And the actual building itself is 50 feet, it meets the code requirements, just a canopy that is in violation?
That's correct.
Okay.
The millhouse, that's the second variance, that has setback variances as a structure, 25 feet from Randolph and 35 feet from Schoolhouse. So, those both require setback variance. As we said, this is truly a unique feature, and we think it'll really anchor this corner and be a design element that everybody will appreciate being here. It is not a principal use, it is not gonna be, you know, an actively-used part of the site for retail. It is really just there for the aesthetic function and for the design element on the site. So, again, we think because of the enhanced design that it provides to the site, that it justifies the granting of a variance.
Okay, and for the record, that will not be habitable space, so that will not be counted as far as parking requirements or anything else. It's a decorative feature. There may be some storage in the building, but it's not habitable, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The freestanding sign is the third variance. The sign is gonna be located just to the west of the entrance drive here off of Schoolhouse Road, so you can see it in the dark color there. Your standard sign requirements is 100 square feet maximum for a sign, and I've been involved with many of these in the retail developments, and what we've kept on this project is the sign face itself to that 100 square feet. As I'm sure you're aware, your ordinance counts all the area of the signs. It counts the structure, it counts any detailing, all that goes to the square footage of the sign. So, that puts it in excess to the 231 square feet. Again, that's well detailed on A3 plan of the architect's, and you'll see, again, it's what I think is truly a unique sign. It's got a stone base, it's got timber columns that are shown, and a roof design on it that is, will be unique to the typical sign that you see in Franklin. So, for the decorative elements there, again, we think it's well justified. And the fourth variance is the building-mounted signs, which will be the tenant signs. Those are 30 square feet maximum per the ordinance, and we're asking for 40 square feet. Again, the reason for that, and if you look at the architectural plans in your set, and the architect will also go over, there's a lot of detailing on the building. It's not just a flat facade where you'll see that sign easily. With all that detailing, we felt that the extra square footage blended better into the architecture of the building, would make it more visible and more readable, and would work well with the design. So, again, we think because of the distinct nature of the architecture on the building, it's worth, and it's worth granting that. There was one question that came up in Vince's review about the height. We're gonna keep to the four-foot max height. There was a question on scale, if any of them bigger than that, but four-foot will be the max lettering height on that sign, so we're not seeking a variance for that portion of it.
Well, one second. Actually, the max height is three, isn't it?
The max height is three. We're asking for-
We're asking for variance to go to four.
Four.
Sorry about that, yes. Asking a variance for four, but it's not bigger than four. You're correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. And just for the record, has the township planner opined on the variances that we are seeking in his report?
He has, and I had a summary for my report, but as I mentioned to Mr. Healy, his reads better, so, basically, is under a C2, flexible design is what we're seeking in these variances. And that basically says that by providing these unique design elements, you enhance the design of the project, and for those reasons, you're, you can be granted a variance. So, under that criteria, we would seek those, and as Mr. Healy said, that he believed the variances would improve the appearance and design of the shopping center, and had no detrimental effect. And, of course, I wholeheartedly agree, and I think they'll actually have an enhancement to the area. They won't affect any of the, negatively any of the neighboring public or the zone plan at all.
Okay. Very briefly, a couple other quick points, and then we can move on to the next witness. Refuse will be handled in the back of all of the buildings?
That is correct. They're in the back of all the buildings, and we'll change our detail there, as Mr. Healy's requested, so that the enclosure matches the facade of the building.
Okay. Now, have you had an opportunity to review all the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application?
Yes, I have.
And can we comply with all of the requested modifications to the plans? And there weren't very many, but can we comply with all of them?
Yes, and I'll be brief. I just wanted to hit, because some were kind of questioned specifically. And Mr. Healy's and the parking and some of the other staff talked about some of the parking spaces that were tight to some of the curves or coming into some of the intersections, and we would agree that a few of those spaces, we can take off of the plan to provide more green space and more aisle space on those. We'll still be well above the minimum parking ratio.
There was the issue in Mr. Healy's report of whether you could bank some of those spaces, since you were significantly older.
Yeah, there are some in the back that we will also bank, especially up against, as was requested, up against where the neighbors are there. Some of those, we're gonna want just to have good access for the back, but some of them would be a good idea to bank some of those as well.
Okay. Yeah, if you could just provide the final details to, you know, Mark, that would be fine.
Certainly.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could suggest, I had to comment, as well as the engineer, and I think traffic safety as well, perhaps you were just about to get to it, but the intersection, internal intersection to the, well, to the upper left of the main building, yeah, basically, that needs to be realigned, so that's perpendicular, and that's gonna, that's gonna involve elimination of some spaces as well.
Exactly.
What I would suggest is that before you get, if the board ends up approving this, before you submit for compliance documents, you meet with staff, go over all these issues, make sure we're all on the same page.
Agreed. No problem.
Thank you.
Also, those six- Also, those six-foot pines that you mentioned, they're nice-looking trees, but I think Leyland cypress in that area are going to be more effective.
I was actually going to ask, are they pines, in white pine?
No, I don't, I think we went with spruce and...
That's actually better.
Spruce?
Yeah.
Wow. They're not going to grow as fast.
Yeah. We have had luck with the Leyland cypress as well, because they grow pretty well. And we've used them elsewhere on the project, I know. So I can work with my landscape architect, maybe...
Put a few in there too, because they're going to give coverage for the, if those townhouses are up higher...
Well, that I agree with, yeah.
Yeah.
They're going to be looking down on that site.
Yeah.
But elsewhere, yeah, spruces are what I think we all recommend.
Yeah, we have Douglas fir and two Norway and Colorado spruce.
They're much slower growing.
And just for the record, Mr. Healy brought up on page four, item E, the square footage of the amenities to meet the zone. There's not, we're much, much, multiplier in excess. We'd only need about 200 square feet of amenity space, meaning patios and things like that, and we're 4,000 square feet. So again, we've worked that into the plan from the beginning.
Each building's going to have a utility room for water services?
Right now, I think the way we have it is that it's, I'm just looking, the fire department connections are all coming into a utility room on one end of the building, yes.
Along with the domestic? Looks like there's two inch services for each of the small rooms?
Right.
Do you agree to design it in compliance with the township's water department standards, as well as provide 24/7 access?
Yeah, how we...
24/7 for each individual unit, no?
For the utility room.
For the utility room.
Yes.
Yes.
What about the air conditioners? Are they going to be on the roofs of these buildings?
Yes.
Are you going to have a screening?
Yeah, the architect can speak to that a little bit, but yeah.
I think the ordinance is such that they can't...
Can't be visible.
Yeah. Parapet or something.
Right. And as far as comments from Mr. Vega, those are all fine. I don't think there were a few similar comments about parking stalls. And we'll give you your water valves, too. But the rest of them are pretty straightforward, and we have no problem with those.
Thank you, Mr. Arndman. I have no further questions.
Were there any other staff reports?
We'll comply with all of them, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there were a few other things, but very minor, very, very, very minor. The bulk was yours, Mark's, and engineering's.
Yeah, traffic was basically the same issue.
Yeah. Any questions at the board for Mr. Arndman? Bob?
I think this is sort of a design question, and it's just a concern, and I may be overly nervous about the world, but I'm glad that there is a path that connects this with the development. But what I'm nervous about is if you go up the path, you run into a tot lot, and that strikes me as potentially a dangerous thing. I wondered, I know it's not part of this application, but perhaps that tot lot could be moved more into the community where it would be less, less available to strangers, let's put it that way.
I guess our thought on that, and we can take a look at it, was that people coming in that direction would be the community. It's, you know, it's not, the walkers are from the community, so we didn't foresee that as much of an issue. Obviously, it'll be fenced, but we can take a look at it.
Is the, just a quick question, on the detention basin, is there any landscaping around that, on the top of it, for example? Any screening? It may be one of, again, those basins where you don't grow anything in the middle of it, but you can do stuff at the top.
It, again, is one of those infiltration basins which you discussed tonight, so not in the, but on the top, again...
I mean, you do have housing on the one side. I think on the other side is the back of the clubhouse, so I don't know.
And this is a tot lot?
Yeah, the basin, so on the landscape plan sheet four, we do have, as it faces towards our project, there are pines and basically on the two sides of the corner that come towards our project, so I'll, as I'll show you on the exhibit A2 there. The rest of it actually was kind of designed as part of the residential development. I don't have all that data here. I think some of that, that went around towards the top, the same tot lot, and the rec area has similar plantings there, just not on the, kind of in between, there's a spillway section without any.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at the sheet you circulated and not the detailed plan, but there didn't seem to be any trees around the basin, so I was sort of...
Isn't that basin already built?
Yeah, that's under construction now.
But it doesn't mean it can't be planted.
No, no, I just...
Shouldn't there be a fence there?
That'll be a dry basin.
It'll be dry?
Yeah.
So if a tot wanders over from the tot lot, there's not going to be a problem?
Right. And yeah, some of those didn't show up as well. It's in a lighter on that handout, kind of almost yellowish. I don't know why they came out on the drawing, but there are plantings on that corner.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just like, I'd just like to hopefully see a little more in the way of landscaping at the top, just so that you'd have a, especially towards the area of the townhouses that back right up to the basin, I think you'd want to screen that. I think on the other side of the basin, it looks to be to be...
I think, and again, that was part of subdivision project, and I think we probably did, but that would be as part of that project.
Well, on the other side is an open field, which I assume is recreational area for the, for something, for the clubhouse. So, I mean, there, it may not be important if it's an open field anyway, but at least for the two sides of the basin there, Mitch, that screen that back up right to the townhouses, might be nice to screen those.
Okay, we'll look at that as well.
I mean, it's probably not a lot, but it would make a difference, I think.
I think Ted has a question.
Oh, sorry, Ted.
Now, another aspect of Mr. Healy's, I'm asking, did you clarify how the signs will be lighted?
Is your mic on, Ted?
The architect will answer that, Mr. Chase.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, the dumpsters will be serviced how? Dumpster enclosures? There's three of them.
Correct.
Be like a front load?
Exactly. They'll be front-load style, and that's, as you come around the northerly driveway to come in, there'll be front-load into the dumpster, pick them up, come back and go out, or pick all three up as you go, and then exit onto the Schoolhouse Drive.
The smallest of the three at the southwest corner of the site is the 10 by 12. Is, will a truck be able to make that turn to get in there, to do a front load, to, I'm assuming it's the type of truck that comes in with the two forks, lifts it?
Exactly.
Is that going to be able to, you know, swing it to get in there?
We took a look at that radius, and actually, we had had it closer to the front. We pushed it back there so there'd be enough room for it to make that full swing.
So it'll be able to make that truck turn to get in there and not...
Yes, sir.
Take out half the curb?
Yes.
Mitch, are you proposing any changes to striping on Schoolhouse Road? I see on the colorized version, SP1, that you have some yellow striping there that isn't, is that existing?
That's existing.
That's existing, so that just showed up.
Yep. Yep. That's where the turn lane starts there, but it is existing.
One more question, Mr. Chair. The number of handicap spaces, is that the minimum that's required?
Yes, seven. Once you get up to 200, it would be eight, so we're under that threshold. We're at seven.
One of the things we might want to explore with staff is perhaps adding a little bit more, considering the population in that area of town and the potential customers or likely customers. Might want to have some more handicap spaces?
Taking all the good spaces away.
Yeah. The other thing, we could look at it, but if we add handicap, you're going to lose...
You're 34 or 35 over.
Yeah, we're over.
You have some room to work with.
We could probably, so we kind of have at each corner of the big building, and we have at one corner the small one, so maybe at the other corner of the small building...
I can tell you that we've had a number of retail go in in that area, and they put in the minimum, and then we get the complaints after. So I would suggest you look at that now.
That's fine.
And if you knew other questions for the board?
I've got one other, Mike.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
The rustic mill house, do you need water service for that?
No. No utilities. Okay.
You have a pond?
You do have a point there. I was thinking for bathroom or any other facility like that.
That's what I'm asking.
We will need to get a water feed over there. Hose feed it? It is, it's small.
But you've got to fill it somehow.
Yeah, I mean, we could hose-feed it. It's not...
A bucket.
So once you fill it, it just recirculates?
It's had the fire departments come with the...
Yeah, it's not, it's a small design element. Yeah, there was, no, I thought to have any water sanitary service.
You're still going to need it in the summertime, because where that is, you're going to get the southern exposure.
That's true.
And you will...
One more thing to look at. We'll take a look at that as well.
Unless it's only this big.
It's going to, yeah, it's not a large, but you have a point.
You're going to lose water.
And animals will come in and drink it, too.
And it's going to be circulating, right? So there's no mosquitoes or anything like that?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your names, last name, and provide your address for the record.
My name is Lawrence Appel, A-P-P-E-L, Principal of Appel Design Group Architects, 2444 Morris Avenue, Union, New Jersey.
Mr. Appel, can you, as I'm handing these out, just briefly go over your educational and professional background for the board? What's your, for this board, your position?
I hold a Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering, as well as a Master's in architecture. I hold licenses in New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania.
You just said the magic word, New Jersey. That's where we are. So you're accepted.
Thank you.
Mr. Appel, you prepared the elevations and the architectural rendering that is, and the, that is before the board this evening? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we have marked exhibit A, I believe it's four?
Eight, three.
Eight, three. And that's basically a rendering of the proposed site?
Yes, this is a slightly elevated, what we call a bird's eye perspective view, showing the corner of the property with the proposed mill house in the foreground and the two retail buildings in the, in the background.
Okay. And for the record, the mill house is not to scale. It's, you know, we tried to highlight it to show it to the board, but in comparison to the other buildings, it is a relatively small building.
It is, and what you have to look at in here is the artistic rendering is to kind of show colors and concept and feel in here. All of the sizes of everything are correctly depicted on the architectural drawings. There's heights, they're all on scale drawings, so it gives you an idea. It's a, it's a small building, but if you did not create enough size to this, it will kind of look a little pathetic. So we wanted to make sure that it was appropriately sized, so that we can have a functional water wheel on this. And that's why there's a pond, because we have a functional water wheel. That's what's going to agitate this. And we kind of felt that this was a special, unique feature for the, for the property, something that would create a gateway to the community here, something that was deeply rooted in history of the town and the area. And we hope that this will truly become a landmark in the area, something that we took very seriously. It was a unique opportunity where the developer asked us to push a concept and create a theme and do more and more as opposed to less and less. So we took and ran with it, and we're very proud of what we came up with.
A couple of brief questions. One, that Dr. Chase sort of asked the previous witness, the lighting for the signage for both the freestanding and the affixed signs to the buildings, how are those signs going to be illuminated?
All, all of the lighting is frontlit, so they will have architectural fixtures and luminaires that will light the signage either from overhead with gooseneck fixtures on the facade itself, or in the case of a lower sign, like a landscape sign, it would be groundlit. There is no internally lit or backlit signage proposed.
Okay. Now, in Mr. Healy's report, he asked about the materials and that we're going to use and the color schemes and things of that nature. I note that you brought a bunch of stone and roof, perhaps because of the lateness of the hour. Can you just describe what we are constructing here? And if the board wants specifics, we can provide it to them?
The real view here is, look at the rendering. I think the rendering captures the feel that we're looking at. We tried to use materials, especially with the, starting with the mill house, standing seam metal roofing, cultured stone veneer, horizontal siding, familiar details like a barn door and cottage-style shutters. So we tried to create materials that feel real and appropriate and some connections to historic context. To, with the two retail buildings, we tried to create a building utilizing similar materials with the strong architectural ties, but in a modern, contemporary manner. We're still have the standing seam metal roofing, as well as metal accent roofs on the awnings, cultured stone veneer along the base of the buildings, as well as incorporate it with some of the structural elements, horizontal and vertical siding, board and batten siding. And by the way, for the siding, the intent is to use hardy plank for this, so it's not intended to be vinyl siding. And timber accents, this is added for a little bit of rustic charm, and we feel that it works well. All of the colors, soft muted earth tones. So they're, you know, you get a feel for the type of structure and how it's going to feel from the rendering itself.
Okay. And lastly, the freestanding sign that you designed, can you indicate to the board, A, how that's illuminated, and B, the materials used for that and its relationship to the rest of the project?
Well, I'm going to switch very quickly to our architectural drawings, which you have in your packages also. Drawing number, and this package in here, we have tagged as A4. Since there are five sheets, it's A4A through A4E, and... The typical tenant sign is shown on drawing A3. This is the freestanding sign. It has architectural treatment. It has a little brow roof with standing seam metal roof, the timber columns and brackets. This is all meant to carry the same charm as the structure. So they're not generic signs. They were something that, everything about this project was meant to be integrated, carrying this concept and theme and integrating it with the, both the materials and details. So the sign in here has a base. The lighting, as shown in the typical side elevation, is the light fixtures are under the roof to illuminate the tenant sign as opposed to having it backlit.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
And that sign as well is depicted on the rendering? I believe it's on the.
Yes, yes, on the.
It's just to the left of the driveway?
This area over here is where that tenant sign is located.
I have a question on the rendering. There's some folks walking on the sidewalk. Looks like it's a concrete sidewalk. Your drawing says it's asphalt. The drawings, the drawings for the project say it's an asphalt walk or bike path or some other thing.
Yeah, as, as part of the overall master plan, all those are wider than the typical four-foot concrete, so they were wider and they were, they're designed for asphalt. And that's the, to loop around the entire project. That, that wasn't part of this retail, that was part of the full Summerfields, and that's how they were approved.
So the original drawing showed it as asphalt?
Yes.
It's behind our, we have the curbs, there are curbs behind here, right up those in block curb, so.
On, those are your curb on Randolph and Schoolhouse.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're gonna put an asphalt, something behind it?
Right, and that's what's going down Schoolhouse now if it goes, that's, was part of the Canal Walk project. That's similar, that was put in on that stretch too.
Okay, thank you.
But this picture shows concrete. That's gonna be concrete, right?
No.
No? It's not gonna look as nice. Why can't it be concrete?
Well, the, the, the side, the sidewalks that are there, and part of them are already under construction, are all asphalt, and they're all wider. They're, they're not four-foot wide sidewalks as, or typical, for example, on Hamilton Street. They were meant to be wider so that bicycles can use them and things of that nature, even if you look across the Canal Walk. So while, I mean, the, the, this is a rendering, the actual approved plan shows asphalt all around, and I believe it's six feet wide, is it?
Eight feet.
Eight feet.
Yeah, but that doesn't.
But it kind of looks like the, blends in with the very unique look that you've given the rest of the facility, even if it's not matching asphalt.
Yeah.
The rest of the way. I mean, it really goes as an enhan, one of the enhancements.
Yeah, just because there's asphalt already down in like other parts of this project doesn't mean that you couldn't do concrete along this.
Four-foot? It, it wouldn't have to be eight-foot, it would be four-foot.
Why?
An eight-foot sidewalk would, would be inappropriate. I mean, if you, if you wanted to have a, a residential feel to it or a downtown feel, it would be a four-foot wide sidewalk.
I don't have a problem with that.
I, I think the, the one thing the board does want to consider though is that the eight-foot wide sidewalk was there for, it's, it's eight feet for a reason, because it is part of the larger approved Summerfields development where you're supposed, they're supposed to have this loop concept so the residents can ride, ride bikes or walk. It connects to sidewalks within the development. You know, I, I think you might want to hesitate to go to have eight foot everywhere and then some more narrow just in front of this project.
Why couldn't you have a concrete sidewalk with a bike laying next to it?
Can I say something?
No.
No.
Well, I mean, this design that you, Jonas is very nice.
And, and typically would be a four-foot sidewalk, and, and I guess Mr. Healy is, I, I don't know if Mr. Healy is saying it should be eight feet of sidewalk, and I don't know if eight feet of sidewalk would look very nice.
But could we have a four-foot sidewalk with a four-foot bike lane next to it?
Six-foot sidewalk.
I mean, there.
An asphalt bike lane next to it.
I mean, you expected it to be, you know, the mill house and making this thing really look gorgeous.
I mean, and.
You made it look too nice. Now you're, now you're going cheap on it.
Now you're changing it. I mean, you're showing us the Cadillac, and now you're trying to switch it to Volkswagen.
Uh, can be nice.
My, my aesthetic thought honestly, in this section, I think the eight-foot, if it's concrete, is gonna look like white and wide there. It's gonna, we do a lot of work at, at Rutgers on their campus, and eight-foot wide, and it's concrete in New Brunswick in downtown. This isn't downtown. I, I, I think eight-foot wide as a white concrete is gonna look wide.
Well, so then you can edge it with brick. I, I mean, I.
I actually, actually, wait a minute. I, I don't have an issue with making it a little bit narrower, maybe like, you know, I don't know, six feet, because this is the terminus of the project. So the likelihood that somebody's going to sort of like go across to the commercial and continue on their bike, I mean, they're not gonna do it on this sidewalk anyways. So having it be sort of like the terminus of your project, to me, could justify a narrower sidewalk. Right? That makes sort of sense? And so why, why can we do a six? Can we, can we do a six?
For the frontage.
For the frontage?
Yeah.
Yes!
For the frontage.
That's fine.
Okay, good.
Then we can keep the look.
Okay. Next time you gotta tell your CAD guy not to do quite such a good job.
Better remember that for the next, the next project.
It's for, it's for the concrete, that's the only reason for that.
All right. Are we, are we, are we?
I'm done with the architect unless there's any other questions the board has.
Okay.
One, one clarification for the architect. In terms of the screening of the rooftop equipment?
Yes.
I, I don't recall if that's specified on the plans.
It is, it is not specifically specified. The, typically what we do is we're, we locate the rooftop equipment near, near the center of the building where the internal center columns are.
Okay.
That's what we try and do. So when you take this equipment and you huddle it toward the center, you typically do not see them. The building naturally screens itself. We're.
Yeah, and I can understand that from users of, of the shopping center, but what about the residents in the back? Is there any way to possibly slightly mitigate their potential view of that equipment?
Well, what I would, I would not want to raise the height of the building or create deeper parapets, but if there, if these piece of equipment are viewed from there, we can screen the backs of it.
Yes.
And my recommendation is not to do this with architectural materials, but actually to make them blend in with the sky. We find that to be more effective.
You mean, in terms of the equipment itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on.
Mr. Dean?
All right, thank you.
I know that Mr. Dean is our traffic expert, and I know he's testified before this board a zillion times, so I know he, unless your qualifications have changed to the worse, that you're, he'd be accepted, so we'll just swear him in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address?
Certainly. Gary Dean, D-E-A-N, 792 Chimney Rock Road in Martinsville, New Jersey, and I'm still licensed as a professional engineer in New Jersey.
Still wanna let that lapse. Okay, great.
Mr. Dean, you were retained by the applicant to do certain things with respect to this project, is that correct?
Correct.
And your firm actually did the original traffic analysis for the entire Summerfields project, is that correct?
As part of the general development plan consideration in 2006, so now we've had a full nine years of updates and periodic evaluations.
Okay, and what did you do in conjunction with this application?
We, we first compared the traffic that we're now expecting with this project since it's been designed. When we started with the GDP process, it, there was a placeholder put in that assumed a 50,000 square foot center. Obviously, that's, that has not materialized, given the, the need for setbacks and buffers, and so now we're at a center that is 31,000 and change square feet, so a substantially smaller center than I'll say as the traffic engineer we always planned for. With that, there's naturally an attendant decrease in projected traffic, and the study that we submitted as part of this application, just for identification purposes, is a letter to the planning board dated December 4th of 2014. We updated the projections associated with the, this, this final plan. I'm pleased to say that through the efforts of this board and the developer and the planning and the ability to actually evaluate traffic over the past nine years, most notably as Canal Walk has been built out, but now that's, as units are being constructed and occupied in Summerfields, that our projections have overstated the anticipated impacts. We're seeing less traffic than we forecast, and so that we have not seen any detrimental change in levels of service and that post-construction associated with this project, we're still expecting very good levels of service, which is the traffic engineer's term for how movements occur, at level of service C at Schoolhouse and Randolph, and more importantly, at level of service B during both peak hours, entering and exiting the site. So I consider that to be above average in terms of typical traffic conditions and, and certainly not indicative of a likely, a problem. Certainly, this center is designed, and you will hear in the coming months, to serve not only this particular community, but Canal Walk, which originally was to include a commercial component. All of that activity has now been consolidated at this location. As part of our review, we included in our study a critique of the overall circulation. I have to commend Mr. Aardman and his firm for a very efficient and user-friendly design. You can see from wherever the site plan went that it features the primary parking field in front of the buildings, which as customers, we'd, we'd want to have closest access, but conveniently segregates the service activity and some of the employee traffic behind the buildings and outside of where the, the customer activity will be. So it's a, a, a very good layout in terms of accessibility for customers and the, and the vendors and delivery vehicles. There were some comments in the staff and police reports to, I'll, I'll say, clean up some of the circulation relative to posting of stop signs and striping, and, and those will be addressed in the final revisions. But from my opinion, it certainly has less traffic than we planned and will provide a safe and very efficient means of traffic circulation, recognizing sort of the unique population that is now coming into place in this portion in the township. And, and that's all I have.
I'm just gonna ask you one quick question. Adequacy of parking, and I know we're taking out some parking spaces, but is there, in your opinion, adequate parking within the confines of this center to service?
There is adequate parking. I neglected to mention that I believe in 2007 or in some original approval, it was envisioned to have 222 parking spaces for this center. That, that's way overparked, in my opinion, and I think the recommendation to bank parking is certainly in keeping with standard design practice. Green is always better, and for smaller convenience-oriented retail, where you have more turnover, there's just not a need for really even four spaces per thousand, and we greatly exceed that. So the applicant will defer or bank parking or remove them in favor of green space. I do agree with Mr. Healy's recommendation to add more handicap spaces. As we see the change in driver demographics, there is a, an increasing need for more handicap spaces, and I think, again, in light of the population it would serve. That's a, a very good recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. I have no further questions.
Questions from the board for this witness? Okay, we'll move along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
That concludes my presentation.
And you're done? Okay.
Move to open it to the public.
Well, I'll just, let me just ask if there are any questions, general questions from the board beyond that? If not, then yes.
I'll move to open it to the public.
Sir?
All in favor?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would suggest that, so we save time, that we should swear them in and they can ask questions and give the statement at the same time if they want, so we don't have to do this twice?
Oh, sure.
Just may save us a little bit of time.
You do. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address.
Okay, Dina Lux, and my address is 51 Patriots Way. I live in Canal Walk. I have a few concerns. I'm really excited about having a new shopping center, retail center coming to that corner, but I have some concerns, having lived here for quite a few number of months and traveled the area. My concern is, there's not, there is no plan for a traffic light at the corner of Schoolhouse and Randolph?
There is not at this time, as there's no need for it. However, the board's prior approvals and recognizing you're sort of new to the neighborhood, there is a mechanism in place as part of this project, as well as Canal Walk, for this applicant to fund a traffic signal at whatever time it's deemed necessary.
Okay, I'm, the reason I'm asking is because I have seen trucks, you know, it's a very big industrial area, and I have seen trucks actually go right through that stop sign at Randolph, where I've been driving down Schoolhouse, and trucks just come right out and turn onto Schoolhouse, and with a, a retail center there, that makes me even a little bit more concerned, because it might just increase some traffic in that area.
It, it certainly will add activity. In terms of running stop signs, unfortunately, that's a matter of either lack of visibility or enforcement, and traffic signals get run the same way stop signs do, so I'm not sure that's the, the right way to address that concern, and certainly, I'm sure through engineering and zoning, that concern in terms of enhanced enforcement should be pursued.
What it might be useful to know, and, and I think useful not only for you, but for us to know, is what's the trigger, Gary, for when, when a light would be needed?
In simplest terms, I know the hour's late. When traffic gets real bad, and, and there, two things happen. Either people complain to the, the elected officials, engineering realizes a demonstrated, say, stacking, you know, 15, 30 cars stacked up chronically, then it's suggestive that there's a need for an improvement. But the technical term is that warrants need to be satisfied, which means the, the volume of traffic can be quantified and sustained over the course of the day. Almost every intersection in New Jersey could probably qualify for a traffic light based on rush hour. And for that reason, these warrants are typically based either in proximity to a school, number one, or number two, having sustained sufficient traffic over eight hours of the day. So.
And the township's traffic, safety would make that determination, I'd.
Correct, usually through police or engineering.
Because there's a both township roads, not county roads.
Yes.
So.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, just from a layperson's point of view, I just worry about accidents, car accidents and truck accidents.
So am I.
Okay. Also, I know that there is a lot, this is something, I don't know, I want to talk to council people about this. There is very poor lighting from Randolph Road down to Metlers on Schoolhouse. The lighting there is awful, the street lighting, and I'm concerned with cars pulling out of that shopping center with low, you know, low-level street lighting or very little street lighting. I know my husband has driven down there, and there have been deer that have run out and run in front of his car and hit another car coming in the other direction. So I'm really concerned about street lighting there on Schoolhouse from Randolph to Metlers. And I'm concerned also, especially after hearing about this other complex going in on Canal and Weston with more trucks coming into the area, I'm concerned about an increase of truck, truck traffic. For example, if there's a Wawa that goes in to that shopping center or some kind of convenience store, where would the trucks be parking? Say they want to go and shop there or buy something there or stop for coffee or. Say they want to go and shop there or buy something there, or stop for coffee, or lunch, or a sandwich, where are trucks gonna be able to park?
Yeah. There are no provisions to accommodate truck parking on this site. We believe that the center is certainly, to a degree, slightly overparked, and what typically occurs if there is a delicatessen, for example, and a landscaper pulls in in an oversized vehicle or a trailer, they typically park in the more perimeter or remove parking spaces away from the building facades, but we have no provisions for tractor-trailer parking or oversized vehicles.
Okay. I have to say that, you know, like down further by Elizabeth, you know, where CVS is, where that shopping center is, sometimes in the morning, rush hour, later in the day, and lunchtime, the traffic that's, that is coming from that shopping center out onto Schoolhouse down there is a nightmare, and I guess that's my, that's a concern, you know, in terms of traffic egressing and, you know, coming in and out from that shopping center, and whether it's going to impact the travel on Schoolhouse Road. And I'm also concerned about the hours of operation for the retail center. I know that at one point, was it the planning board, that decided, for example, that Dunkin' Donuts would not be open. I don't remember how that happened, but I used to live at Renaissance, and at one point they decided that Dunkin' Donuts wouldn't be open past a certain hour, and I'm concerned about, you know, it becoming a hangout or something, and I think that that was the reason behind Dunkin' Donuts not being allowed to be open past a certain time. Can you address that?
Can I comment on that? Because that was a result also, not only with what you said, but it's much, the proximity of those shopping centers to Somerset Run is virtually, it's across the street. And it was not only, it was a lighting issue, traffic issue, and so on. I don't see those same reasons applying to Canal Walk. They might apply to the housing directly behind it, that's something we might look at, but your point's well taken, but those restrictions were for a very, a very different site.
Okay, all right. But are, there are also planning to be houses on the corner of Metlers, so that's gonna be kind of like diagonally across, or is that really much further down where there are gonna be houses by Metlers? That's gonna be too far down?
That's further down.
That's further down?
Correct.
Okay. And one more thing, if you're planning on having bikers riding down, are there gonna be any provisions for people to come in there, and where are they gonna put their bikes?
That was raised in Mr. Healy's report, and we're gonna meet with him. We will be putting bike racks in the center.
It's a township requirement.
It is? Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in this application, sir?
You raise your right hand for me? Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address?
Ray Henson, H-E-N-S-O-N, 11 Mayflower Court, live at Canal Walk. Just have a couple of concerns and questions on behalf of some of the other residents in Canal Walk. We are, of course, excited about having another retail space near the community, but our concern is that we certainly don't want to have another 7-11 or quick-check type of establishment. And there was discussion last week during our community meeting that the developer would try to attract the best kinds of tenants that they could find. And my question is, you know, what is your idea of the kinds of establishments that you, that you hope will, will be able to attract, and are you doing anything proactively to get in touch with those kinds of establishments so that we don't end up with another, yet another Dunkin' Donuts, yet another 7-11, et cetera?
Well, I've done numerous shopping centers, and until the plans are approved, and sometimes until construction begins, it's hard to attract prospective tenants. As you can see from the design of the center, my client is trying to have this more of an upscale, hoping to attract restaurants, eating establishments, and things of that nature. We have no defined users as of today, and it is really very difficult to try to approach users until we are approved, but as we go forward, it's our hope that this is a little bit of a different shopping center than you've seen in the rest of the community. And there are some fine shopping centers in the community, but we're trying to make this one a little bit different.
Good, good, thank you.
If I could just, real briefly as well, I think, just based on my experience, the way that they've designed the shopping center, both in terms of the building massing and the fact they don't have a pad site, I don't think this is gonna be something that a quick-check or a Wawa is going to want. I don't think there's the space for it, it's just not positioned that way. As well, they have a very defined architecture here. Quick-checks and Wawas, they have their corporate architecture. If this gets approved, they're gonna have to build exactly this. So they're not gonna get a quick-check at the corner with the big quick-check signs.
Okay, thank you. One other quick question with regard to the Mill House and its position. Have you considered whether that might affect the vision of people who might be turning left, you know, onto Randolph from Schoolhouse?
Yes, that building sits back a minimum of 25 feet from the right-of-way, which is another at least 10 feet back from the edge of pavement, so, you know, to put it in perspective, and I don't quite know the dimensions of this room, but it's set back very far off the edge of the road. It's not right on top.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'm moved to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Just very briefly, I think we've justified the variances. They're not major variances, but I think they are an enhancement. The other thing, just for the record, as you are aware, or many of you who were part of the Canal Walk project, originally, the Canal Walk project had within it, and actually has an approval for a commercial component at the corner of Metlers and Schoolhouse. That is not going to be built, so this will be the only commercial in that area. You will be seeing in the next month or so, plans for the corner of Canal Walk, which will be...
I think we already did the subdivision for that, right?
We did the...
The lot line.
The, we created the lot, but you'll be seeing the rest of it. So there will be no commercial as part of Canal Walk, and again, in thinking about the traffic issues, again, traffic that would have been generated from that shopping center is not gonna happen, because there won't be no commercial there.
Well, when we approved Canal Walk, we, Summerfields was not yet conceived, so obviously we had the commercial there, and then when the same developer did both things, then, you know, we traded off.
Right, so I just want to make that clear, so you're not gonna be seeing commercial on another corner somewhere down the road, even though it's already been approved.
Yep.
And I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thanks, Peter.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Subject to all the conditions and the staff reports and everything that was discussed tonight.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Houff?
Yes.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Mr. MacIver?
Yes.
Mr. Metler?
Yes.
John Yonker?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, and I think you did a very good job creating a unique shopping center that shows us that our enhanced standards ordinance is really working.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, the next meeting will be canceled, so the...
March 4th.
Right, March 4th will be the next meeting.
Okay, and if everybody could try to, you know, familiarize themselves with the online system, there's still quirks in it where, like the staff reports for tonight weren't in, weren't in it. You could see the routing sheet and a lot of the designs, but not the staff reports, so that's getting worked on, and I'm gonna try to ask the IT guy to kind of put the fluff somewhere else and the substance up front, so, but do try to familiarize yourself with it. There's nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
I just want to...
All right.